Now called to order the July 23 Common Council Meeting. Where can you please take the role?
Allison Osby, here.
Herman.
Here.
Obergauer.
Here.
Rosie.
Here.
Feschel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present seven.
Councilmember Allison Osby will lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Just one minute, please. Thank you. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have introductions of city staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Davis and Mr. Collins to do the introductions this evening. Alan, if you could start.
Thank you. My pleasure to introduce Mark Lyons as a new Planning Services Manager. He's been our principal planner for a couple of years here, and prior to that, he worked in Green Bay and northern Indiana. He's from the Valley, and he's been doing an excellent job as a principal planner. He's very involved with site planning and current planning and economic development projects, so I think we'll be very pleased with his work based on his experience and his performance to date. And here's Mr. Lyons. You've probably seen him before.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. Collins will do our next introduction.
Sure. And then my pleasure to introduce Steve Tomasik. He's our new Transit Operations Manager. So Steve comes to us from the private sector. He was in the less-than-truckload industry for quite a few years as a terminal manager and supervisor. So he has a lot of supervisory and management experience. He lives here in Oshkosh. He's from Illinois, but don't hold that against him. He's now come to the good side. But he'll be doing, managing our grants and then helping manage the daily operations as well as helping with some marketing and some other things.
Welcome.
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 Welcome. Next, we have a presentation on the Pioneer Redevelopment by Tim Hess.
Hi there, council. Thank you for letting us come and speak tonight. My name is Tim Hess. I'm here with Art Dunky, and we are here to give you an update as to where Art is at with the potential of redeveloping the Pioneer. We are seeking some public assistance, and at the same time, we're also asking that we expedite the process as quickly as possible. So there's kind of some technical details as to why we're making that ask, so I definitely want to fully explain to you guys, because I appreciate why we're sitting in your seat and somebody came and said, "I've been looking for public assistance, and we've got to speed it up." I'd want to understand why. So we're going to tell you what the project plan is tonight, and we're going to kind of allude to why, if we speed it up, it's really kind of a benefit to everyone, kind of thing. So I've given you guys all some handouts, but I've got some animations, so you may want to watch it on the screen. So anyways, we're talking about the Pioneer Inn. I think we all know where it's at. It's right off of Pioneer Drive. We've got the island within the marina. For a little background on it, it was purchased by Deckade in 2002. In 2004, they tore down all the hotel rooms in there, and earlier this year, we finally tore down the remaining portion of it. So really, the marina in terms of, or the island in terms of the resort is pretty much cleared out, but the marina is still, definitely still in operations. So Mr. Dunky has an option to purchase, and he's looking to execute that option by October 1st here. So he wants to take control of it, and he's got a plan for what it is that we want to do with it here. One of the issues is, I don't know if you saw this, there's kind of this little blue portion here that lights up, that peninsula out there near the island. I'll move it back and forth, here we go, a couple times, so you can kind of see where the blue is. All that land is technically owned by the state of Wisconsin. There's this Board of Commissioners of public lands and the DNR. They own that land, and they lease it out to Deckade. It would then be assigned to Mr. Dunky if he executes the option here. There's also an easement then put in place so that the public could ultimately get to primarily that peninsula out there, but that's part of the factor of everything that's going on here, is taking into account this particular easement. When we created that easement, there was also in 2006, a stipulation agreement. And I'm not an attorney, but my best read of it said that the city is committing to, once construction happens on that island, that the city would commit to constructing and maintaining the easement in the walkway, basically putting in a Riverwalk. That was the previous city manager made that sort of agreement. And the other thing that's of note is, this site is now in a designated opportunity zone, so that's what's changing things for us a little bit. So it's kind of the overview of the site. I want to kind of walk through what Art's plan is. If you know the guy, you appreciate that he's passionate about getting people outside, and you'll see that the plan is kind of focused around those sorts of efforts. So we'll start with the marina here. One of the first things that we want to do is put in a new boat launch. There is a boat launch that exists out there, but it's really for larger sorts of vessels, and he wants to be able to serve much more of the smaller sort of boats, so putting in a new boat launch would be a good thing. He wants to put in two additional piers. Putting in two additional piers would provide an additional 80 slips, and it turns out that the assessor really puts a thermon of value on these piers because of the revenue that can potentially bring in. He wants to provide recreational watercraft rentals, so jet skis, pontoons, parasailing, and he also wants to implement a water taxi, providing a means for people to commute from Fond du Lac to Oshkosh to Nina via this taxi, potentially up the Fox River, but kind of providing an alternative means of transportation as a separate sort of business. He's looking at, the plans call for 12 units of extended, say, suites out there on the marina that would overlook the lake and the marina, and I think the idea is for this to primarily serve the marina customers, but it would also be open to the general public if they were interested in renting one of these suites. And then also, there's a boathouse there, and he wants to substantially expand that boathouse and really turn this into the premier marina within the Lake Winnebago sort of system here. So then, on the island, I'm dubbing this a recreational micro-resort, and so it's going to have a lodge and a restaurant, which also houses bathrooms and a facility for changing, because there's going to be an 8,000-square-foot swimming pool there, kind of a zero entry and some rocks in terms of what this thing would look like, kind of a natural feel. He's also proposing to put some event tents for people to potentially rent, so say, somebody wants a wedding, or a company wants to hold some event there, they could potentially have it outside underneath some of these tents. So this is my favorite thing right here. This is a view of Lake Winnebago from atop the tower in High Cliff State Park. It's a cool view. Mr. Dunky is looking to provide an analogous sort of view, but on the Pioneer Island, but he adds one additional facet that I really love, and that is this. He's going to make a zip line between those towers, so we'd have a zip lining facility that would connect the two towers there, so you get that view and the excitement of doing a zip lining adventure here on the island. He's also looking to put, I believe we've got, what, six recreational condos. These recreational condos would be a daily rental kind of thing, and kind of envision them as a tiny home. So we're talking 400 square feet, we're talking two beds, not two bedrooms, two beds, a kitchen and a bathroom kind of thing. If people could rent that, it would be right out on the water, do some fishing off of there, looking to implement that. And then finally, a new phrase for me that I've never really known before, but glamping sites. What is glamping? Glamorous camping. So providing the facilities to do camping, but having all the amenities right there and being able to just call over to the restaurant and get food brought to you, if that's what you so choose. But again, if you look at the location, it's kind of a neat place to potentially put that. So this particular site, as you may have guessed, has some exceptional site-specific sort of costs. One of the major issues is the amount of dredging that is required to go out there and implement the marina here. It's working as a marina, but still, you've got a lot of dredging to do, and that's really expensive stuff. Seawalls, to implement some of the Riverwalk sort of stuff, potentially, we would want a seawall that would also provide the ability for some of the boats to go towards that restaurant in the warm months. What I've heard is an estimate of every lineal foot of that is on the order of $2,000 per lineal foot. So that, too, is extremely expensive. And then there's the Riverwalk. I think Mr. Dunky is interested in trying to help participate in the construction of all of this. So those are some of the expenses that we're potentially facing as site-specific costs. So here's the thing. Mr. Dunky has been working on this for a fairly long period of time. I remember in, I think it was November, December of 2016, him having me come in and look at a hospitality consultant that put together this report, looking at what would happen if we put a hotel there, and just financially, it wasn't going to work out. So we're left in a position where he's been working on this a long time, but the opportunity zone has changed the financial picture here. And so our taking an initial look at this, we believe there's on the order of, this says 12 million, you know, today, we found an additional $2 million of expenses, great, but that would equate to roughly maybe $8 to $9 million worth of increment. And so here's what we're looking to say to you guys. I think Art is fully committed to this particular plan. It's a pretty cool plan in my mind, but he's also open to the prospect of getting more funding through the opportunity zone funding mechanism, that to some extent, to help potentially offset maybe some of the Riverwalk costs, if we did put a hotel there, if we did put maybe a ropes course or something like that in there, that would provide more increment to maybe be able to offset some of these extraordinary expenses. So that's kind of where we're at. But the dilemma is this, if we want to implement an opportunity zone sort of funding to guarantee that the potential investors could take full advantage of the benefits of the opportunity zone, all this needs to be in place by December 31st. And so what I kind of did then is said, "Well, we want to try to get as much time as we possibly can to secure potential opportunity zone fund investors, so we want to try to maximize that." And so what I tried to do is look backwards and say, "Well, okay, how quickly could we potentially do a TIF?" And if I work through today, we've got an application in next week, gave ALERS three weeks, gave two weeks of public hearing notice, have a public hearing, potentially, we could get all this through by September, I think that's supposed to be September 23rd, maybe it's 24th, but... So that's what we're trying to do, is hit that particular date there. And if we succeed at that, if we succeed at that, that would give us the most potential time to potentially go out and get more opportunity zone sorts of investors. I'll admit that if he succeeds at getting a bunch more people, that likely, the plan could materially change between the time that we're asking you to approve it and the time that we would approve potentially a development agreement. But that's kind of the key there, is that you guys would have a second look at this. Maybe we could write the TIF plan such that it's fairly flexible in terms of what the expenses are, give them time to go secure potentially more funding to do something bigger, but then come back to you and kind of give you all the analysis on whatever it is that that final plan is. So that's kind of the logic behind what we're asking for here. Again, while December 31st is the hard deadline, of course, if we wanted to get a development agreement in, we're assuming that the fourth Tuesday of the month is December 24th. I'm assuming you guys aren't going to come in here on Christmas Eve to serve Mr. Dunky, so we're really kind of looking at December 10th as kind of our drop-dip date here, so just to give you an understanding of what we're shooting for. So here's our ask. We're asking you to believe in kind of what we're proposing here, and that we would hope we could provide enough analytics and details for you guys to potentially, on the 23rd of September, to potentially approve this, but then we would go back and seek some opportunity zone funding and potentially bring you guys something even bigger. Getting something bigger would provide more increment, and that might help facilitate alleviating some of the costs for the Riverwalk that, right now, the city is kind of committed towards. Of course, I would look at all of this and say, you know, kind of the same argument that I made for the Aviation Plaza, this is a gateway to the city. It's a gateway, though, from the river, and that if you're on a boat and you drive by there, you've got a bunch of people looking and kind of giving that cringe, like, when is something going to happen here? We've got 17 years of this thing not doing anything, and Mr. Dunky is looking to do something what I think is pretty cool. The other thing that I like about the proposed plan is that I really feel like not putting a big hotel there kind of makes it where local citizens would feel more invited to come and participate in the types of activities that he had there, where I remember when the resort was there, I didn't feel like I was invited to come and enjoy that land unless I was paying for something there at the resort. And so this, to me, also kind of brings the community to the waterfront, and all of that, I think, is something that is worthy of support. So that's my presentation. That's the rationale. Art is here that he'd be happy to address any questions. If you guys got anything for us, let me know.
Oh, I don't think there's a shortage of questions, Mr. Hess, Mr. Dunky.
I do have a question, going back to the first rendering. Obviously, this is conceptual, but it seems that a significant portion of that on the island is parking lot. Is that the glamping sites?
Uh, for some reason, I don't have any control of this, but no. Here. So the glamping sites are kind of down at the northeast and facing out towards the lake. Let me...
Okay, so what exactly is a glamping site? Is it a place you pull up your camper or trailer, or...
The picture that I had was probably not exactly what Mr. Ganther was intending on building there, but I think he had more of kind of a deck. There we go. That's the location there, where that line is pointing.
Okay, I see.
And so there's, he was kind of envisioning putting almost a deck out there and having tents on top of the deck.
Or yurts, or gypsy wagons, or...
Yeah, something like that.
But so then, what is that half the island there in parking lot?
I'm sorry, what?
The black, is that, is that all parking?
Is parking lot, and then I believe kind of that darker green that still has hatchmarks that look like parking spaces is that, not the impervious, but the pervious sort of parking which Rain could go into.
Okay, okay.
So that's... Grass.
That's basically the existing parking lot there, right? Sorry.
Right. That this plan, my understanding is, this plan actually reduces the amount of converting surface relative to what's existing.
So that is, I'm sorry, the black is what's already there in terms of parking?
In terms of actual space.
Okay. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hess, how soon would we then start to see? If you're asking for an expedited timeline to look at actual and real numbers?
I'm hoping to give you the best numbers that I got by next week.
Ooh.
Yes. So that gives ALERS, you know, that gives you five weeks, that would give you time to go in close session, take a look at what we're proposing. ALERS would have three weeks to do their stuff, another two weeks between the time they're done and plan commission. So you've got a good five weeks before it hits plan commission, and then another three weeks. So you're looking at eight weeks' time there from next week is what we're...
So depending on the opportunity funding mechanism and how that works, are you saying that the 12-unit would be replaced by potentially a larger hotel, or the larger hotel in addition to the 12-unit?
I don't know that we've fully hashed out what the possible alternatives are. Art's got 12.
On the 12-unit, that's going to be done, that's millions of dollars, that's what we're done, but he's referring more to on the island itself. That's where something bigger and better. On the actual marina, kind of what you see there is what you get. There could be maybe a few million more of infrastructure or building increment.
Sure.
But for the most part, the marina is going to be rocking forever, just the way it is.
So the management of the arena, would that be the same as all of the other?
Depends on the investors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through private equity?
Highly likely. Highly likely it'll be the same.
It'll be the same, okay.
So our team and our staff, our mission is to get people to go outside, and we're really excited about running the marina. If we're forced to, we'll run the island also, but if somebody comes up and says, "Hey, we've got something bigger and better for Oshkosh," we'll get out of the way of the island, and we'll just run the marina as what our vision is.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Artie, how long have you, how long have you owned this place?
I don't own it.
I mean, how long have you had it optioned, sorry?
I was going to say, five years.
And how long has it been torn down, Tim?
Well, the, 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 the hotel since 2004.
So it's looked like Beirut for 11, 12, 13 years? Okay, that's what I want, thank you.
Actually, right now is the best it's looked in, 14 years.
All right, thank you.
That's true, too.
City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is really just more, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Dunky, Mr. Hess, and I had indicated to council that this was coming forward. The, you know, the main operative for us is more going to be about the development agreement in December, because this is still going to have to get vetted out by the DNR. We're hopeful that they'll be very receptive to these things, but there are a lot of changes from what was originally envisioned. You have to go back, literally, you have to go back 15 years, and there was going to be sort of a reboot of the Pioneer Inn. Clearly, that's not what's being proposed here, something different. So we're going to be meeting with representatives of the DNR in the coming weeks to see how receptive they are to those things. That could change their numbers. The major challenge we're going to see, and I think Mr. Hess pointed out very well, the challenge is whether it's the dredging of the marina, which will have to be done by Mr. Dunky, or the seawall. Do we need it, do we have to do a seawall? If we have to do a seawall, as Mr. Hess said, it's like $2,000 a foot. We're estimating on the southern end of the island, that could be as much as $2 million. That would not, the TIF as proposed, or as I should say, projected here is probably the best way to put it, $8 million in increment gives you a net present value of about $2 million. If we're a little more optimistic, maybe two and a half, but certainly not enough to provide Pago-type of incentives and take care of the seawall. You know, we were, we met with some representatives of the DNR today to just kind of initially present this to them, because we're going to have many discussions with them, but one of the discussions we're having is, we're going to need some assistance in terms of grants. This has got to be one of the most great places for potential Riverwalk, and after all the work we've done on a Riverwalk, this is really going to be the icing on the cake, and we want to make sure that we can get that, because that's crucial to Mr. Dunky's success, as well as our success, in getting that destination of the point there on the island. We want to get the, we want to get the Riverwalk to terminate there, and we're going to need some money to do that. So we're going to be working very closely over the next few months to try to figure out what the DNR will accept, and then what they would be open to in terms of available grant funds.
I guess, Councilmember Obergauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess this is probably more for Mr. Roloff, for city staff as well as ALERS. The compressed timeline that the applicant is possibly requesting, what's that look like for us? What's the impact of that compressed timeline? Is it achievable? And what are the potential negatives from doing that very compressed timeline?
We'll have to be very careful that when we put the TIF plan together, that we cover all the possibilities that may come over the course of this review process by the DNR, as well as down the road. To the degree something else happens besides the recreational area that it converts, say, to a hotel, we have the ability to include projects in there. We want to include the Riverwalk, even though we're going to be seeking grants. We're going to pursue, we're going to include development incentives, because we have to be, we have to be prepared for virtually every type of possibility. We can amend a TIF plan, but we can only do it once, so we don't even want to take that chance. We want to get it right and be as broad as possible. The real key's going to be in the development agreement, because the, I feel confident that we can get the TIF approved by September 30th. The purpose of the September 30th deadline is, if you have a TIF approved by September 30th, the effective date of the TIF goes back to January 1 of 19. Otherwise, it moves forward to January 1 of 20, which could impact the value of the TIF. It could, it could raise the value of the TIF, and then we have less increment. We don't want to do that. We want to take advantage of everything we can do. So get the lower value as of January 1, 19. That helps us long-term. So we think we can get the September 30th deadline done, and then I think they're still in a learning mode with the opportunity zones. That's still a new phenomenon nationwide, and, but they want to take the full advantage of that, and I believe what they're, Tim, they're like, they're 10 years' worth of credit, but you don't want to miss, you don't want to leave a year on the table. Is that, is that a fair statement?
The benefit is that five years and that's seven years, and then if you hold it for 10 years, then any of the increase on that particular project is completely forgiven in terms of capital gains. And so for people looking to make this investment, that's the big-ticket thing that's going to draw people in, and if we miss that deadline, we can't guarantee they would get that benefit.
All right. Sound offer.
Same issue real quick. So timeline, I don't recall, let's say, four years ago, we did a feasibility study. It was, we did two of them. The first one, we didn't feel, you know, we just didn't trust it enough. The second one was very, very expensive, and the guy's super detailed, and he called all the hotels and motels in the whole region, and it came up to where 71% of hotel stays in our area are business travel, and then the remaining was 50/50 between tourism and convention, okay? And so the vast majority of that business travel is Oshkosh Corp., and they're all, everything's based off of Perdium, so you couldn't competitively get a lot of the business travel, therefore, the resort fails. So, you know, the original goal we had is we'd put a resort there, because we thought that's what served Oshkosh best. So we, the opportunity zone didn't exist at that time, so that's the reason why it's important for us, just to make sure that we're not, we're doing what we think is best with Oshkosh with our plan right here, without there being a resort, but if somebody that has got gazillions of dollars and wants to come invest in Oshkosh, we don't want to be in the way of that, is kind of the gist of our ask, I guess.
So if I understand this correctly, this has been developed over a period of time, and as excited as everybody is to see activity there, what you're asking for is like a six-week compressed decision with no other way in other than plan commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're required to follow the law regardless of their compressed schedule. We're basically doing the minimum amount of public notice required to do that, and that's why I suggested they come this evening, so that, you know, people can start talking about it, people can start hearing what it's about. But I would say between September 30th, assuming the TIF gets approved, and December 10th, when the development agreement, there'll still be a lot of discussion about that. That's where you'll really get the meat on the bone, because right now, it's still, we got to still work with the DNR on those things. So between, between now and December 10th, I think will be where we'll have...
Wouldn't sustainability come in, SAB come in around the plan commission timeframe as well?
We have typically not sent the, a TIF plan to the SAB. It's not that it's inappropriate or anything, it's just that we haven't done that. I don't know if there'll be enough detail to even have anybody comment on it, except more of the more conceptual stuff. The concepts that are presented there, I don't think are going to substantially change unless the DNR changes them because of regulatory requirements. We're pretty much going to wait until we hear from the DNR before we even chime in from a local, all the regulations that we have, but if they can pass a DNR muster, that's certainly going to help us a lot. But we could go to the, we could go to the SAB, for example, even in October after the TIF's approved, because that's where the, that's where the real details are going to start to fall into place.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. This will be my last question for tonight. Is there anything in which we would have to work with the railroad, or is, are we good to go with them, or is that something we'd have to factor into the equation?
I can tell you that what we're proposing to build in 20...
I could tell you that what we're proposing to build in 2020, next year, from Main Street over to the railroad right-of-way, does not involve the railroad tracks. We were planning on using the existing crossing in the short term to get over to the island, so we don't necessarily have to do anything unless we wanna change that, and there might be some reasons to do that, but at this point, I couldn't tell you when that would be. And then, just to follow up on an earlier point, there's the TIF piece, and then there's still the planning and zoning and site plan piece that also has to be done, and I'm not sure if it's gonna be simultaneously, or it'll be the TIF plan, and then, once they know the specifics of their plan, it still will go to plan commission and council for the actual zoning approvals for this whole project, and that is very appropriate for the environmental impact and the, all the state and local codes that Mr. Roloff mentioned.
The reason why I ask about the railroads is because, as we know from history, the railroad does not know the word expedite, and so that's certainly something that could potentially play in. But I just wanna say, thank you for being transparent and direct in your ask. Would much rather hear it upfront than, you know, the appearance. Perception is reality, so I appreciate the transparency.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I don't have any issue at all with the compressed timeframe. We've been looking at that dump for 15 years, and I'm excited about this. So, I think this is a great project, and it doesn't worry me one bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. First, thank you for bringing forward a proposal for this site, so it's very much appreciated. And my, I guess, Mike, I just have some general questions.
Sure.
Looking at the first page of the presentation that you provided us, the red line shows kind of a boundary of the, of the site. And so, am I, if I read this correctly, this suggests that, that your option to own goes all the way up to like halfway between 15th and 16th Street?
According to the assessor, yeah.
According to the assessor, okay. It's much bigger than what, growing up in Oshkosh, that I thought the Pioneer property was. So, that area that, you know, that extends to is, I grew up being, if you call it the corporate.
Yeah, it's really, it's really interesting, because when I started, I thought we'd be owning the island, and there's a lot of ground we don't own, but a lot of water we would, so it makes sense.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So then, so I find that interesting, because is there, is there then thought of doing any type of enhancements to that, to that peninsula that goes up, that kind of closes in that bay area there?
You're looking to the south, you mean?
Yeah.
Eventually, we're gonna just put more, more docks in there?
Okay.
That'd be it.
So, and then, you know, following up with that, because that area is historically a fishing area.
Yep.
Would those, you know, is that, would that be conducive with your, with your thoughts of future development?
Okay, so that's a, that's a really good point here, is that, again, our mission is to get people to go outside, and we're very focused on fishing. So, the north side of the island, that whole thing with, not the glamping, but if you look at, there's basically floating houseboats as well as recreational condos, that's all set up specific for fishing.
Okay.
And that, and we really believe that that is one of the best places to fish in our state, and I think it'll bring a lot of people to Oshkosh, and they can enjoy some awesome fishing right offshore. And then, also, anything we can do enhanced fishing, we're gonna certainly do, and so there's gonna be some dredging that's gonna take place inside of that red zone, and hopefully can do some outside of it. But again, it's, anything we do is do enhanced fishing, not to track from it.
Sure, okay. And then, just thinking about the Riverwalk, as we might perceive it on these, on these renditions here, is that, is the Riverwalk gonna, is it gonna go through the property, or is it gonna go just along that? Because where you come off of Pioneer Drive, there's that, I think it's a trail that comes off, and then it goes in, in and around that eastern edge, northeastern edge there? I'm just trying to visualize where you visualize that.
Okay, you're right, where it's showing, there's two different colors on the Riverwalk, and so, the stuff that's lighter to the south and bending around like the little bay in there.
Sure.
That all, we're envisioning it looking similar to the Riverwalk that's downtown right now, high-end, awesome, grade A. And then, the Riverwalk going through the middle, we're looking at, we're gonna make a contribution and pay for that, and that's gonna be accessible, but it's not gonna be, you know, it's not gonna cost the same that, it's gonna cost the city to put the rest of Riverwalk in.
Okay.
And that, right now, the way it's set up with the DNR, the Riverwalk is intended to be on the far north side of the island.
Sure.
But that's gonna take away all the fishing opportunities, and so, we're negotiating with the city and the DNR to allow us to put the Riverwalk through the middle of the island.
Okay.
So, did I understand you to mean that, that would not have Riverwalk on the north end?
There's Riverwalk on the north end of the island, but it's not at the very tip north. It's, the Riverwalk is going through, it looks, on the screen, looks like pinkish, maybe?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, that's part of the Riverwalk. It's just not, it's just not constructed the same way to save dollars.
Right.
Any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thanks.
Next, we have the first round of citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items not listed on the council meeting agenda. Are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh and common council. May address at a future meeting. Must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Clerk, do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Next, we have consent agenda items. Do we have anyone registered?
No, we do not.
Okay. Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Looks like we have quite a number of special events. Councilmember Miller.
I'd like to pull 19409, please.
That's approved professional services proposal to Lee Recreation for Playground Design and Installation for Menominee Park, Little Oshkosh Replacement, $495,000. So, do we have a motion and a second for consent agenda less 19409?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All right, can we please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, so we will bring in 19409. Take a motion and a second for.
So moved.
19409.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna vote yes on this tonight, but I just want everybody to be reminded how we ended up paying for a $500,000 playground. Again, this is one of those situations where we run into the Parks Department a lot, where a group of people get together and they have the best intentions in the entire world. The whole community got behind this little Oshkosh project several years ago, and it seemed awesome at the time, but then these groups break up, they disband, they go their own way, and we're left here to pay the freight on something that people pledged to keep up and do. It just, again, it's another example, and my frustration with people not understanding that these projects eventually end up on our lap, and it's very frustrating for me to shell out a half a million dollars for a playground that was pledged some years ago to be taken care of, maintained, replaced by a large group of people. So, thank you.
I do have one question. Mr. Roloff?
Yes.
Do we have anyone here from Parks?
I'm, I had a discussion.
You're it?
Yeah, Mr. Mauer's recovering from surgery, so.
Two things.
Hi, Ray, I know he's watching at home, so.
Sure, just two things. So, it looks like we did not take bids on this.
No, we take proposals, because every firm has a different, really a professional, and you could even argue artistic bent to it. They're aware of our budget, and pretty much, they propose what they can do within the budget we establish, and then we evaluate that proposal, because there is, there is a little bit of, you know, subjective review of this. We really look for the best bang for our buck, what has the most features, what things are there. We required, in this case, we required port-in-place surface, so that it's rubberized, it has a much longer life, it's easily patchable, it doesn't require the ongoing maintenance cost of mulch, which in some cases out here, costs $10,000 to $20,000 annually just to, just to replace mulch. So, that port-in-place just gives it a much longer, longer life. And then, we did the Polco survey, and we did surveys at the, Live at the Leech, and this was far and away the most favorite of them. It got a plurality, not a majority, but forty, with five different options to choose from. This got about 42% of the vote amongst every, against all the different options, so did much better than any of the other options. Staff reviewed this choice and felt that it was also the best option. I'm not sure if Jake, if you have a picture up that you can, can show for people. I know the mayor had asked for a copy for the council, but Jake, do we have a copy that you can put up on the screen? There you go. This is the one, actually, Lee Equipment, I believe, or Lee Recreation, it submitted a couple proposals, so that's where it is. It's not a bid per se, it's really more a proposal, and if, yeah, you can leave it up there, that's much better to look at than me, Jake. But you can see the different features on there. It's slightly smaller in area than Little Oshkosh, but that's because the port-in-place is rather expensive, but it does provide, there's a lot less ramping that's required in this feature, so that gives you more play area for, for your dollar.
And the questions that I had received was, some of the community groups and user groups had asked why there weren't benches, shade, or a splash pad. So, I'm not sure if that came into play or not. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna kind of comment on the overall, because I was on the Parks Board when a lot of this came forward, along with Councilmember Miller, and I think, you know, we did get eight firms that did provide an RFP, and I think that, yes, we had hoped that Little Oshkosh could be rebuilt and rebuilt the way it was, but couldn't. This is a great opportunity, and this will last a very long time with the newest playground equipment that's available, and I, you know, we, we had it in the CIP already for this year, so we kind of knew how much money we had and how much was available, so I think it's, it's awesome to have this rebuilt and within our budget also. So, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Councilmember Crowsey.
There was discussion about the benches. Is the city gonna be adding any benches around? Because I mean, this is a family facility, basically.
Yeah, over time, we will be adding those things, and, you know, benches, we can fill in the blanks after that. Council did approve at the last meeting an additional play area. The Menominee South group had proposed that, and that was part of the Great Neighborhoods, and that will be immediately adjacent to the site, so benches and that can be anticipated with that, but, but we'll ensure that some benches are there. The parents have to sit somewhere, so I'd certainly support that.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. When it comes to some of those additional amenities, is that something perhaps that through, maybe perhaps dedications or things like that, which could be fundraised to help offset some of those costs?
Oh, absolutely. I think that that's, that's a great idea, and I'm sure that that's Ray, if Ray was here, I'm sure he's probably actively doing that type of stuff. I think people are excited about what this is. Few people are disappointed about the loss of Little Oshkosh, because there's a great deal of nostalgia, but I think this represents a really good opportunity for, to have a great recreational immunity, amenity in our flagship park.
And as I said, there were a number of people who had reached out through various neighborhood groups, and individuals who were quite disappointed that there wasn't a splash pad, because apparently, there's not one on this side of the river or this side of the highway, so I'm not sure how that got left out, but for $495,000, I hope this would wash my dishes. We have nothing further, we'll take the roll.
Osby, Allison Osby, sorry.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, next, we have pending ordinances. Ordinance 19433, established street grades North Keller Street and Northwest Field Street. Do we have anyone registered for 19433?
We do not.
Good motion and a second for 19433.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Sign him, can we please call the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Pending ordinance 19434, approve zone change from institutional district to institutional district with a planned development overlay, IPD 215 Church Avenue. Do we have anyone registered on this?
We do not.
Okay. Bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I just have one question. Jake, do we have a visual or something Mr. Lyons perhaps provided with the approximation?
This is an example about what the fencing itself will look like, very similar to the Public Works facility. Yeah, there is a site plan. I'm not sure if Jake, if you've got that as well.
I think there was a gate, also a visual on the gate.
I, hopefully, I included the spec sheet for the gate and the fence. It's all that same metal material, so there's the site plan showing the proposed location of the fence. Hopefully, there's one more.
Kind of the south west quadrant of the parking area.
Do we have another one, Jake?
So, that doesn't swing open, that just slides across, is that right?
That's just a portion of the, the standard. Apparently, I do not have the gate spec out. There is also a gate spec that I can get you if you'd like.
The gates, the gates across the driveways are sliding gates, they're not swing-open gates, they are sliding. And then, there will be a man gate, which is just a swing-open and enclosed gate over the sidewalk adjacent to the parking lot as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Mugrower.
Sorry, thanks, Madam Mayor. It's very similar to central garage in the design layout, the materials, how it's gonna look. Yes, thank you.
All right, no further discussion? Can we please take the roll?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Rosie.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have pending ordinance 19435, approve amendments to Chapter 11 Electrical Code of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. Do we have anyone registered for this?
No one is registered.
All right, question and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Just briefly, Mr. Robbie, would you care to share, or Ms. Lawrence?
This'll be Mr. Davis.
Okay. Summary, just a quick summary.
Very briefly, it's cleanup. The state has taken away some of what we had, taken away our ability to regulate some of the things we had in our code, so we're just bringing our code up to date to match that change in the law.
Okay. Mr. Davis, are there any specific highlights?
Let's see, there used to be a local licensing requirement. We don't do that anymore, because state, they get licensed through the state.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, can we please call the roll on 19435?
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have 19-436. Create Chapter 21 of the Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to public construction and services, methods of payment, special charges, special assessments, transportation utility fee, and amending portions of Chapter 14 Stormwater Management, Chapter 24 Waste Water Systems, Chapter 25 Streets and Sidewalks, and Chapter 28 Water pertaining to public construction and services and methods of payment. Do we have anyone registered?
Yes, we do. Quite a few. Mark Schultz, 902 Bavarian Court.
And if I could ask others who are registered to speak, if you could potentially come up closer to the front. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am against this and for many obvious reasons. But the thing that I would like to ask the council is, do they know how many other cities in the state just have a wheel tax compared to what you guys want to do with your proposal? How many cities, do you know how many cities in the state of Wisconsin have a wheel tax?
Cities in the state of Wisconsin have well over 20, I believe, at this point.
About 20.
27. I did a little research with the DOT. Do you know how many counties have a wheel tax?
A few.
11. So I don't think you all have did your research. I think you're going one way rather than another. You know, you're going your way. I'm just going to call it, it's a pick. You're putting a lot of lipstick on one pick, man. And I'm just saying, there's other options. I don't think you guys have researched your other options. You know, of those 27 cities, most of them, the wheel taxes are between $20 and $30. DOT takes 17 cents out of that. That's their juice that are big. You know, they get little money for doing it. And I'd just like to know how many vehicles are, if anybody knows this one, because I don't, how many vehicles are registered in the city?
I believe it's over 50,000.
On your proposal, you had, I believe, to raise the 3.2 million annually, you set a $65 vehicle fee, correct? That's what it would take. So I just want to know if anybody knows how many vehicles in the city?
Yeah.
Because I know you guys are worried about people registering their vehicles in other places. And no, I think it's a burden that's been put on, what you guys want to do is a burden on the businesses of this city. And we work very hard, we work very long hours as a businessman, and you know, we take a lot of risk. With risk, there's reward. You guys are trying to take some of my reward away, and I just don't like it. So I'm, I'm just against this. I think this is something that's important enough where maybe it should go before the whole city and put a vote to it. Let the people decide. You know, it's, you know, it's, you seven, you know, I appreciate everything you guys do, the time, everybody who works for the government and the time you guys dedicate to do this. But you gotta, you know, you gotta think of the whole, all the voters, not just some of the voters. And I'm just against it. So that's where I'd like to leave that, and that's my statement. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schultz, I didn't catch your address.
902 Bavarian Court.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, did you want to respond to that question about?
Yes, we, from the Department of Transportation, we were given a projected number of about 53,000 vehicles. We know from the experience of other communities that have enacted a wheel tax that oftentimes the reporting of vehicles is not very accurate until after something like that occurs. I know from my direct experience with the City of Appleton, when they enacted it, town of Grand Chute, many vehicles were allegedly registered in Appleton that actually existed in Grand Chute. And there was about a 5% to 10% loss of number of vehicles. So we've just conservatively estimated 50,000 vehicles. It'll be subject to final report after, after that would be done. So $50,000 to raise 3.25 million, as we're estimating to eliminate special assessments, that's where the $65 came from.
Is that number with or without sidewalks, Mark?
That number, that would be with sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay. And who do we have registered next?
Okay, our next speaker is John Morelli, 1814 West Wauka Avenue. And the next speaker would be Mark Miller.
Mayor, council, thank you for the time. I did a little research on the website today of the City of Oshkosh. And there's an organizational chart out there that shows the very top are the voters. The mayor and the council answers to the voters. City manager then answers to the council and the mayor. And every department behind that answers city manager. So being said, I'm going to support Mr. Schultz in saying, this should be sent to referendum for the people to have a word in this. You're making up the minds for the people of Oshkosh. It appears that, as we see in national politics, they don't think people can think for themselves. I think you really need to come to the people. Secondly, this proposal should be tabled because two years ago, I was with the county and they had a meeting during EAA to approve a special permit for EAA to build on their property without coming and applying for a building permit. They did that during EAA. There are a lot of business people out there today that are too busy working to be here right now because the amount of influx of people that we have in the City of Oshkosh. That's dirty pool. Thirdly, my final point, back in 1776, we had a member of Congress, before they voted on a Declaration of Independence, state, and they voted on it, that this should be a unanimous vote. It should be carried by majority. That's what I'm going to request of the council. Thank you.
Mark Miller, 1870 Stillman Drive. Then Mr. Pitts will be up, Bernie Pitts.
Council, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. From a business side, we're looking for an opportunity to have a choice. The choice that would fit into each of our businesses the best. The roads in the community here in the City of Oshkosh, they do require some repairs, and that's understandable. You can't dispute that. We want a choice on how we pay for it. If we want to pay through a special assessment, capitalize it, depreciate it, or pay it through an expense. Give us a choice. Give us the opportunity to work with you to make a program that will function for the community and for the businesses and as far as single-family residents. We need to work together. We have to have this so everybody wins. We want a nice community. We need a nice infrastructure. We need to keep people involved. Keep us involved, ask us for opinions, and we can help, okay, from a business side. The other thing in the metrics of calculating this, we're looking at stormwater fees being part of it. These stormwater fees, we already pay a stormwater fee for, or a tax on them. And now it's into the metrics again for the road tax. So that's like a double taxation on our impervious areas for business and industry. So we need to look at some metrics. We need to look at some ways of calculating this to bring this to a usable, understandable, and a reasonable method of paying for the road repairs. From our standpoint, from our business, if we have the choice of a special assessment program that's already in place, our company would choose that one. Because then now we have a depreciable capital investment. City wins, roads are paid for. We win because we have a depreciable capital expense. We're looking for choices. Help us out. Work with us. Let us have a say-so in the programs. We're all part of this together in the community, not just the council and not just business, industry, and private residents. We're all in this together to make it better. Ask us. Get us involved. If you want to put together a committee, I'll volunteer to be on it and help out from the industry side. But we can do this as a group, as a community, and get it to work right the first time. Not on something the City of Neena has adopted, hasn't implemented, and there's no history behind it to know if it'll even work. I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Bernie Pitts, 817 West Irving Avenue. Next speaker will be Tim Smith.
Mayor, council, this proposal I'm strictly against. I would like to make some suggestions to you, though. It seems that the city can come up with TIFs or everything else. Maybe they ought to TIF the districts they want to repave. Now, you know that's not going to happen. But as far as the wheel tax, there are so many big parking lots in the university area which are serving residents of the university. If you put a wheel tax, all those should have to pay because they live there for over 30 days and their vehicles should be registered in the City of Oshkosh by state law. This could be accomplished by collecting from the state university how they're selling these parking permits on the university. And each one of them would also have to be included in the wheel tax, which would then boost your amount of wheel tax for the, for the city. The most fairer would be a sales tax, which if you went to the county, they most likely would put a half, half percent sales tax on, and you could get a one quarter of that sales tax. And that would be fair to everybody because everybody coming here would be paying part of that tax. Now, we have all of these big events, they call Event City, and people coming here and paying nothing. They would help pay for the streets that they're using. And I think that would be something that the city should be looking at and would be a fair share for everybody. Not only that, we would probably get a quarter percent of the half percent that they would bring up. Maybe the school systems that are run by the county and the county government would get the other quarter percent, which has been drained off by TIFs from, and being put on the burden of the property owners now, of the rest of the property owners that are paying their full share. Every time you create a TIF, the school tax goes for the TIF, does not go to the city school system. And this could be a win-win situation for the City of Oshkosh and the school system and the county. Now, the reason I'm really against this is I own the property in the corner church, church in Wisconsin. This tax or fee, whatever you want to call it, would cost me almost $1,000 a year. Now, when they repaved Wisconsin Avenue, that was a state interconnecting highway. The state is supposed to pay 100% of interconnecting highways unless there is parking on the street. There was a falsification in the, in the records that there was going to be parking on the street, and there never has been. Now, the city agreed to pay 25% of the cost of that paving. The city, in turn, assessed each of the property owners 1/3 of the total cost. In other means, they collected 66 and 2/3, of which they were only paying 25%. In other means, the city paid nothing for the hit on my property. I have the question that if you put this, this fee through, is that going to take care of the city's 1/3 of the pavement that you're now, the city pays 1/3 and the two adjacent pipes pay? If it is, then you are adding a tax to the city, to the city residents, because you're already collecting that 25%, or 30, 3/3, 3 and 1/3% for that road. So it's, it's just, it's an unfair situation. I've already paid for the road, a road that was a state's obligation to pay for, and now you want to take and charge me to pay for somebody else's road. And it's just, it just absolutely is unfair. There's, a fine, fine example is, I also own property on the corner of Parkway and Monroe. I paid for Monroe Street when they paved it. A few years later, they come along and pave Parkway. They put an interceptor sewer in the center of the road of Parkway. Now, that didn't do me any good. It did the people that where the sewage was coming from. But they tore out part of the street on Monroe, and I again had to pay to repave it 13 years after I'd already paved for the street. Just where do you start? Now you want to collect, collect again. Just how many times do I pay for my road and then also have to pay for somebody else's road? This is totally unfair. The, I would like to give you a copy of where the state is supposed to pay, pay for the road 100%. And they get paid every year for maintaining that road. Could you pass them up, please? They get paid every year for every lane mile. They get, get in the center of two lanes, they get 100% of this fee that's set. The next two lanes, they get 75%. And the next lanes, they get 50%. So the City of Oshkosh is collecting from, from the state of Wisconsin for maintaining, maintaining that road. I'd like to know what they're doing with the money. They're not maintaining it. I asked the city engineer a couple weeks ago, about a month ago. He said, well, they maintain the storm sewer. The City of Oshkosh didn't put the storm sewer in there either. The State of Wisconsin did. But they're charging me to use it. I think, I think this has gone just a little bit too far with this fee stuff. And I would suggest that you table this and go to the county, because I'm sure the sales tax has to go through the county before. And that would be fair for everybody because everybody coming here would have to pay a part of it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tim Smith, 1705 Oshkosh Avenue. Next speaker is Wayne Youngworth.
Good evening. For those that have heard me speak on this issue, this might be a little bit of a repeat. But for those that haven't, let me just give you a few numbers and my experiences with special assessments. In 2015, I bought my house at the intersection of Oshkosh Avenue and Westfield. Shortly thereafter, within months, I received notification from the city that Westfield Avenue was going to be replaced. I have a large lot. My Westfield side is 240 feet. My Oshkosh side is 127. I was floored by the bill that I was going to see. I was told $26,000. That was, that's a lot. That's 20 some percent of what I paid for my home. In the end, it came out to be about $19,000 once the street was done. I'm not like everyone, I can't write that check, you know? And so I had to take part of the option to spread that over throughout my taxes over the 15 years. Unfortunately, there's a little 6% interest kick in that. So my final bill at the end of 15 years will be just over $26,000. I use that street several times a day. I don't use it as much as others. I don't drive on every street in the city. I drive on streets that other people have paid for. I, I live in a community that now has a lot of development going on. I can see Oshkosh gork from my doorstep. I have a gas station going kitty-corner. I have a proposed 70-room hotel across the street, some office buildings. That's all going to increase the traffic on specifically Oshkosh Avenue. Sooner or later, Oshkosh Avenue is going to have to be replaced. I am not for new fees. I am not for new taxes. But I am for this, because I believe this is a better system than what is currently in place. What is currently in place subjects one street, 240 feet of it, that I pay that everybody uses. I think, you know, I, I was involved as far as speaking at the Finance Committee when they first started looking at it, and they looked at the wheel tax, and that sounded good. And then I watched this, and I've, I've watched it develop into what's being proposed now. And I think what's being proposed now is, is a good system. Because everybody is going to, to take part in maintaining our streets. They can use any street they want, but they don't have to worry about sitting back and wondering, how do you handle when, prior to the special assessment that I was, I was assessed with, then after? Let's look at my taxes. In two years, my tax burden, in order to meet my special assessment obligation, increased 30% of that is going back to the streets. So over the course of a two-year period, my taxes increased 5%. That's not too bad in two years, especially with the way expenses have gone. But when- But when it goes up 35%, and 30% of that is just to meet my obligation for 240 feet of road, it just kills me. The single-family residents cannot turn around and go to their employer and say, "I just got hit with the special assessment, I need a raise, I need to be able to pay for it." I understand there are difficulties, but businesses have avenues that have been mentioned here tonight that help them with these special assessments. I shop local. I do a lot of local shopping. I'll pay an extra 50 cents for a hamburger, I'll pay an extra nickel for this, an extra dollar for that, to help those businesses offset that cost. I'll gladly do that. I think this should be approved by the council and enacted, because it gives me personally the assurance that when Oshkosh Avenue breaks down, I'm not going to get hit with another $20,000 bill. Because when something like that happens, when you get hit with two streets, or even if Westfield deteriorates to the point where I get hit with it again, you eventually have to make the choice. Do I feed my family, or do I pay my house payment, my taxes? I don't know if it's the best system out there. It's surely not the only one, it's not the only one that's been proposed, but I do believe it's a fair and equitable system. And I, as someone who has been recently assessed within the last few years, I'll gladly pay my assessment and that fee from now until my assessment's gone and the fee continues. It's unfortunate to have to do that, but it's not feasible, it's not financially feasible to shell out forgiveness, credit, however you want to do it towards previous assessments. I think what was done under the law that was, that was current at the time is, is something that we as, as businesses and residents just have to pay for. But those, if it saves any, anyone out there from that $26,000 bill, it's well worth the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Youngworth, 60 East Wauka Avenue. Next speaker, Charles Hurdle.
I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Smith. First of all, I would question, are you going to be alive in 50 years from now when that street is actually deteriorates? If you look at Oregon Street, I believe that was paved in 1956, that's 63 years ago. Lasted pretty good. So, I would respectfully disagree with that. At that meeting on January 9th, I was there, and I heard all this evil talk about these evil trucks and all the damage they caused. Did you ever think how much that loaf of bread would cost you? That pallet of soda? Your dining room set that got delivered on those evil big trucks? If they didn't have those, they had to deliver those on small little vehicles, what do you think the cost of that loaf of bread would be? And by the way, does anybody know in this arena here today, know that the average 18-wheeler pays almost $14,000 annually in fuel and rubber taxes across the whole nation? So, I don't think they're so evil. They're necessarily evil. I guess, one of the things I think about is, think of how many roads have been totally replaced and repaved in this community in the last five to 15 years. Where is the moratorium going to end? You going to cut them off at five years if you're not going to charge them? Ten years, 15 years? I know my street's never going to be repaved in my lifetime. So, I guess I would ask you, what is fair? All these people that have paid these assessments over the last 10 to 15 years, they're never going to get a new street again. Those streets are designed to last about 50 years, in most cases, especially when you're off the beaten path. You know, you look at city in the last couple of years, I don't know how many people in this room know, but your water bill went up 11%. It was approved by the Public Service Commission. Is that correct? Anybody know that?
We have not submitted the most recent application that was just authorized. We haven't even started completing it yet.
Okay, so there's 11% again that's going up. Annual inflation rate in this country is about 2%. That's 11% there. A few people mentioned about storm utility. In 2008, the rate ERU was $48. Does anybody know what that rate is today? Anybody up here know what that rate is? It's $130. That's a 275% increase in 10 years. I'm a salesman, I wish I could get a 275% raise over 10 years, 22% increase a year. Doesn't happen. So, how do you justify these increases? Now, if you take the transportation users' fee, which you're proposing, it's $54 on the residents today, right? The little guy, right? He gets $54. I think that's kind of false. It's not $54. If I understand your proposal correctly, every school, every church, every city building, every county building that's located in the city premise will pay a tax also. Is that correct? Is that correct? And who pays? City, county, to keep churches alive and schools taxes? Who pays that? I think all these people in this building do. So, they're not getting taxed $54, they're getting taxed a hell of a lot more than that, because all those fees are going to be paid with taxpayers' dollars. I guess another thing that bothers me in this proposal is your assessment. I think in, in 2019, I think you're going to spend about a total of $1.3 million in assessments for pavement. Your plan for 2020 is 3.2 million. That's a pretty substantial increase, considering the last five years, you basically have repaved about two miles a year. Is that correct?
Mr. Youngworth, if you could wrap it up shortly.
Okay. Can anybody answer that question? I don't think so. So, you're proposing a $1.1 million in sidewalks. Is that the new mass transit for the city? Sidewalks? Come on. What's wrong with the current system? And to close with, we had a meeting at the convention center on July 9th, and we had about 75 to 80 business people there. And I know many of you were there. I'll ask you again, did you see anybody at that meeting that, that talked to you and asked questions that were in favor of this proposal? I think it was a big goose egg zero. So, thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Charles Hurdle, 4489 Sandpit Road. Next speaker, John Casper.
Thank you for listening to me tonight. While I don't live in the city limits, I, I own a building, commercial building here in town on Washington Avenue. I am an attorney and I'm a partner with the Dempsey Law Firm, which has offices here in town. I'm not here to make, to repeat the comments that those who have appeared in opposition to the transportation utility fee have made beforehand. I, I concur with those statements, and I, I think they're right. The reason I'm here is, it is not at all clear, not at all clear, that the city has the legal authority to impose a transportation utility fee. The council members received a letter from Attorney Corey Fish of the Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce Association, which spells out the legal concerns about the proposed TUF. And I, I believe that Attorney Fish was exactly right in his analysis of what, what you're, what the city is considering right now. And it's likely, it's certain, that if you pass this, it's going to be mired in litigation for a period of years. And I would guess that before it's implemented, there'll be an injunction stopping while the litigation plays out. And if you think I'm making this up, NINA, which, which adopted their own version of a TUF, they call it a Tax Assessment Replacement Fee, or TARF, the city attorney, his name is Jim Gudluski, last month appeared before the, appeared at the 2019 Municipal Attorneys' Institute, and he was asked to speak about their TARF. And he acknowledged there is no specific statutory authority that would provide the basis for that TARF. And he went on to comment, and put it in writing, that he fully expected litigation. Now, NINA is the only municipality in the state of Wisconsin that's got anything that's comparable to this. The village of Weston had adopted it, but it went to referendum, it got rejected. There are other states in which TUFs have been examined. In five states, it has gone, the issue has gone to the state supreme court. In four of those five states, the TUF has been rejected as an illegal taxation. Don't, don't think for a minute that because you call it a fee, that that's going to be the end of the story. It simply is not. What happens is these courts look at these things, and they say, "You might call this a fee, but it's a tax." And in four of those states, it's Kansas, Washington, Florida, and Idaho, the TUF was rejected as being an illegal tax. It was only in Colorado that the TUF was adopted and permitted to go forward. I believe it is an permissible tax, and I believe it's going to be struck down as soon as, if, if indeed the city adopts it. You can be assured there's going to be a lawsuit, and it's likely, again, that there's going to be an injunction stopping its implementation until the courts have ruled. So, I urge this council to reject the contemplated TUF. Consider something else, or at a minimum, wait until the litigation plays out up in NINA, because it's certainly going to happen up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Casper? John Casper, 120 Jackson Street. Next speaker, Dan Che.
I'm John Casper, representing the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. We have about 950 members here in Oshkosh. Cut the chase, we are not in support of the proposed utility as presented. We don't believe it's a fair or equitable means to finance street or sidewalk repair. It's not fair for business, it's not fair for churches, it's not fair for nonprofits, schools, and certainly not residential property owners. Simply a money grab and a solution in search of a problem. A couple of weeks ago, city manager Mark Roloff sent me an email and said, "We're, we're looking for a win-win solution here." So are we. We'd like to see a win-win. But I don't think we're anywhere near a win-win on this current proposal. As a matter of fact, I think we're closer to a lose-lose. I've been struggling to find that, and I just have not found that. As I said, the business community does not support this approach. We have not asked the city council for relief of streets assessments in my 30-plus years here at the chamber. And if the city is truly looking for a win-win, I would ask that they scrap this proposal and start over. Our concerns are number, are numerous. First of all, we think the utility uses the wrong metrics. Impervious surface, meaning parking lots and rooftops, is not an appropriate or an equitable measure to tax property owners. There's absolutely no correlation between impervious surface and wear and tear on streets, and certainly not on sidewalks. In Wisconsin, the weather is the culprit. The weather does more harm to cause wear and tear on city streets and also, and also sidewalks, not rooftops, not parking lots. I think the primary goal of the city council, from what I can tell, is provide assessment relief to residential property owners. We think that's a noble pursuit. We'd like to see that happen also. Unfortunately, the proposed utility has nothing, or, the proposed utility has, has everyone else paying for the solution, and disproportionately taxes non-residential property owners. As a matter of fact, that class of property owners is going to pay 52.5% of that total cost. The fee that is being imposed through this utility does not bear a reasonable relationship to which the service is being provided. State statute establishes that that reasonable relationship needs to be, needs to be established between that fee imposed and the service provided. I don't think the city has demonstrated that standard, nor has met that standard. There's an opportunity to challenge this before the Wisconsin Tax Appeals Commission. That occurs, the burden will be on the city to establish that reasonable relationship. And I think the city will be challenged in terms of trying to create that, that relationship. If that occurs, everything you do in terms of implementing this will be thrown out. As I mentioned before, it's, I think this is a money grab, especially that part, the cost part of the, of the city sidewalks included there. It's been demonstrated time after, after time. Whenever there's an issue that the city has, the answer is always, "We need more revenue." We've seen this with stormwater, we've seen it with special events, and we, and we tried it with rental inspection. This is a classic overreach with the inclusion of the city's sidewalk replacement program. Sidewalk repair is inappropriate expense, and frankly shouldn't be in the utility or really should be part of a assessment policy. I think the sidewalk repair program is more appropriately and equally funded through the city's general fund, and certainly not on the size of somebody's rooftop. Within the proposal of the utility, there's no allowance for businesses that operate on a single business campus. Continuous parcels should be treated as one campus and not individually charged. There are many instances where a business has several parcels but operate on one, as one single business campus, but those parcels will each be charged separately. I know the city is proposing to allow for property owners to join those properties. There's a cost to that. Quite frankly, I think if you implement this thing, and if you do move forward with it and it does stand, those businesses should be treated fairly and should be considered as one parcel and one, one single business property. There's been many property owners recently that have been subjected to special assessments because of street construction. This proposed utility fee just adds insult to injury. The proposal does not establish a moratorium. And I believe, and I said this in the past, if somebody recently got their street replaced and has to pay tens of thousands of dollars for that street replaced, they should be given relief from a, from a utility fee for the lifetime of that street construction.
Mr. Casper, could you wrap it up, please? We're at five minutes.
Real quickly, I mean, we really want to see this resolved in a, in a fair and equitable manner. We are searching for a win-win. I don't think you have a win-win here, and I would ask that if you truly are looking for a win-win, you table this and start over. Thanks.
Dan Che, 3175 Atlas Avenue.
I'll set the timer. Good evening. First, I'd like to start out by saying thank you very much for doing a thankless job. I do realize that it feels like all, everybody's got the crosshairs on you guys, but we appreciate you doing this job. I've owned a home over on Maple Avenue that just got redone a couple of years ago, and also I've owned a house over on Hearthstone. I now personally live at, on, where, out in the town of Algoma, but I do own a business that I just bought in the industrial park at 3175 Atlas Ave. I'm not going to go into terms like fair and stuff like that, because again, there's no, you know, fair and equitable is subjective, and I'm not a subjective kind of guy. I think there's a lot of emotion, and I'm, I'm more of a stoic thinker, and so I'm going to, I'm going to stick with that. I do understand empathy, I do have a lot of empathy. I believe that as a business owner, I have an obligation to step up and help our community, and, and enough about that. But one of the things that I really came down on, hard on, at the July 9th meeting was the, was how everything was broken up regarding the sidewalk rehab, which amounts to 24.66% of the $4.50. And when, when Mark, when Mark actually met with us at the chamber meeting earlier, probably two or three weeks earlier... probably two or three weeks earlier, originally they said it was broken up into 10 parcels, but it's actually 11. When we came, when James came, Mr. Rabby, Rabby came, he said there was 11 parcels. So once every 11 years, the city goes around and tags a piece of property or a sidewalk, and that gets, has to get replaced, and they can do it on their own, or they can pay the $400 or $500 to do it themselves. I don't understand, if that, if that avenue is already in place, if that process isn't already in place, why are we taking that money and trying to put it into $4.50 currently? And that, that number, that $4.50 is very, I will say, that's very subjective as a business owner, because we all know that materials are going up, labor's going up, so that $4.50 is, is not going to be where this number sits at for very long. We're in a labor crisis in this, in this country, and labor is going to go up, and that number is going to go up. I want to reiterate one of the things that I heard earlier about double taxation. As far as I'm concerned, I give to St. Ray Fields, I give to the Boys and Girls Club, I give, you know, I'm a taxpayer for the school districts, et cetera. We're going to get hit again through those, somebody's going to have to pay for that as well. So again, there's, it just does not make any sense to me whatsoever. I, I really think you guys need to go back and look at the wheel tax. Let's see, I don't agree with the metrics. Again, staying on the stoic, the DAU, how you go from a stormwater and using that metrics for this type of a, of a fee, I mean, I, I don't understand how you got that, it doesn't, one is stormwater, and that makes complete sense, and one is, it just doesn't, I, I can't see the metrics, and it's, they tried to explain it to me a couple of times, and I guess maybe I'm just too thick. I do want to reiterate what was said earlier about the 18-wheelers, that they do serve the community as a whole, and the system that you're trying to adopt, in my opinion, is, I think it's only been adopted in Nina. We don't even know if it works. And again, I just, I, I don't understand why the leap. I understand, I have the empathy for the, for the homeowner, I get it. I've owned homes in Oshkosh, and I do have the empathy, but that's, that's the cost of doing business. You've got to pay for a third of it. That's just the way, not because it's always been that way, but so be it. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is, and I mentioned this to Matt and Mark and a few other people, I didn't care for the way the, it seems coincidental that the, the water rates went from quarterly down to monthly, and I would tell you that, that that gets to the point of trying to make it more palatable for everybody. So you used to get quarterly bills for your water service, now you're getting monthly bills, and so that, instead of getting them quarterly and having a bigger chunk, now it's going to be monthly, so it's more palatable. And if you're a salesperson, everybody knows that that's what you try to do. You try to minimize it to make it that much easier to taste. And that's what I have to say. I, I am a taxpayer, and I think that, I'd like you to, I'd like you to table this, and actually, I'd like to have you throw it out and look at the wheel tax or look at a different avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any more speakers on this subject.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Mugerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a thank you to everyone who came here tonight to speak, who have called, who have emailed, voicing your thoughts for an issue or against, and participating in the process is at the core of our democratic process. So I really do say thank you for just participating, and it is very appreciated when we get those calls, those emails, and for you to, to come up here and stand in front of us and your fellow citizens and, and give us your thoughts. A year ago, the Long Range Finance Committee was tasked with looking to find a way to replace special assessments for roadwork, to find a fair, more equitable way to pay for those improvements to our transportation system. And it's a system that we all use, and we all benefit equally from having a well-maintained transportation system. The Long Range Finance Committee took their task seriously, directing staff to present many options, and presented much information as well. Committee had good discussions on the pros and the cons of each option that was presented, as well as plenty of variations with those options, too. Never once was the process rushed. When more time was needed for the committee or for staff, it was taken. Everyone involved in the process wanted to make sure we got it right. The process we used to get to this point was thoughtful, it was thorough, and it was This has never been, nor will it be about one person. Mr. Smith has a good example from his home on the corner of Oshkosh Ave and Westfield, but it's never been about him. It's been about the 66,000 people who call Oshkosh home, and every single business in town as well. Those businesses and those residents that are saddled with thousands and tens of thousands of dollars in special assessment costs. This is a better way to go forward. Is it perfect? No. Perfection's unattainable, and I'm not willing to let perfect get in the way of good, and this is good. To those that have paid or are currently paying their special assessments, I recognize that change can be really hard. The cost that you bear for your previous, the cost that you bear is for previous work that's already been completed. This option in front of us is for future work. And unfortunately, we can't go back and look at what was done previously and find a fair and equitable way to, to compensate or to credit. To those that were specially assessed, either are still currently paying or have paid off their special assessments, I ask you to do this. I ask you to think about how much of an impact that cost had on you, had on your family, or had on your business. And it's my hope that after you do so, you'll realize, and we can agree that just because you've had to suffer, others should not have to as well. With that, I'll send it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't think this is as equitable as it could be for the business owners, as well as, as well as the multifamily owners. I, I think this is going to get pricey for, for them and their tenants. I, I would like to table this and, and maybe tweak this a little bit. So I, I guess I would ask for a motion to table this until we can come up with a more equitable solution for everybody.
The highest for lack of a second. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank our colleague, Matt Mugerhour. Certainly, I appreciate the effort that's gone forth. Mr. Mugerhour and I, Councilmember Mugerhour, and I have had some discussions related to this, not necessarily on the same page, however, very civil, and I think also a detailed plan in working with staff and with long-range finance. So I'd like to commend Matt on that, because this is probably the third time, I believe it's come up in, in the eight, eight years that I've served. So thank you, I appreciate it. I, I think I've stated pretty much from the beginning, since this came about, even when we were talking about it during, when it, when the topic came up with budget season last fall, I was never sold on using utilities as the method or the means in which to try to alleviate special assessments. So I've never been fully on board with the original proposal, but I also have to say I don't necessarily agree with the Chamber of Commerce's proposal either. I've heard some things tonight, which I appreciate having the public speak to this. You know, I, I agree that I think collaboratively, we could probably work on a better solution, because it is a hardship. And I can tell you, after the length of time serving, it isn't, it isn't business against residential. We've had plenty of business owners as well that have been hit by assessments that have come and spoke and asked. I think the difference is maybe perhaps the size of the business in which they weren't represented before, and now we're seeing representation of some of the businesses, which, which is certainly positive. But when I hear about collaborating, I also hear things of accusing of money grabs and lawsuits and overreaching and things like that, those are definitely not verbiage I would use to indicate that you want to work together. With that being said, I am not in favor of the current proposal, and there are some reasons. Unfortunately, our finance director is not available this evening, but we did address that a couple of weeks ago, as to why we most likely don't want to kick the can down the road. I think paralysis by analysis is difficult, but I also agree that we do need to do something to alleviate the burden, because it is catastrophic for some small to mid-sized businesses, as well as a number of young families, and also our senior citizens and families that are growing. It certainly is a challenge. What I appreciated is Mr. Mark Miller, Mr. Tim Smith, and Mr. Dan Shay certainly came and, with a true, I think, intent of wanting to collaborate. So I'm not sure if other councilmembers are going to propose some things. I would certainly be open to, I do feel we owe it to everyone to make a decision if it's going to pass or if it's going to move forward. I, I'm, as I mentioned, am not going to support it, however, I would support something in which we would look at this perhaps from now until the end of the year, to look at something that would be a win-win situation starting 2020.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. As quite a few people have said, change is difficult. There's been a lot of proposals. The wheel tax I brought forward over a year, year and a half ago, was dead on arrival. It exempts way too many businesses, it exempts people, Mr. Pitts talked about county sales tax. County talked about it two years ago and was voted down by the county board. They're not supportive of a county sales tax. I think we should have one. I think it would be a great way to fund a lot of things, especially being an event city, but the county board has no interest in imposing a county sales tax. The layover, if we lay this over, will cost $272,000 a month to the city of Oshkosh. If we approve this, we can save a million dollars a year that we have to spend financing special assessments to the people that take the 15, 10, and five-year options. So we would save money there. Compromise? Yeah. You know, I've talked to Mr. Casper numerous times, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, very cordial, good ideas. He brought some good ideas up, and we talked about it. I'm not a big fan of some of the things that are in there. I think the rehabilitation of the sidewalk program should not be in this fee. I think that's something the property owners should be responsible for. The sidewalk portion of it, minus rehab, I think, you know, new construction and that. An email that we got today, talking about exempting subdivisions and things like that, that's all in the developer agreements, and the developer agreements cover what they have to pay for, and then when they sell their lots, that gets built into that cost, so subdivisions are not exempt. But just going back to a couple of things that was said, in the pros and cons of things, you know, exempts vehicles, the wheel tax exempts any vehicles that are 8,000 pounds or more. How many businesses have trucks under 8,000 pounds? So exempt those vehicles. Users outside the city, Mr. Pitts mentioned the university students. Their cars are on student lots, but they're registered to their parents, or they're registered to them at their home address outside the city of Oshkosh, they're exempt, even though they're here, maybe nine months out of year. State law doesn't require them to transfer that ownership. That's a temporary address, living in a dormitory or apartment here in Oshkosh. Does not collect anything from outside users. Special assessments, if this would go through, would not be had in 2019. So I do not support Mr. Miller's recommendation of the delay because of the 272,000. I just don't know what other solutions we have. Special assessments, every one of you probably have watched the previous council meeting or even spoke before about your special assessment on your own property, and wanted it reduced, or wanted it taken care of, or "I can't afford it, you're, you're breaking me, I can't, I just, what do I do?" So we hear that plea. How do we, how do we do that? Yes, we have to, you know, people don't realize that the stormwater utility, why the storm rates go up, is because the utility funds the stormwater portion of that street reconstruction, and the utility can't go insolvent, or the city goes insolvent. So how do we do that? We use LRS to work with our staff, work with our long-range finance, to put together a plan that keeps that utility solvent. And I know there hasn't been a lot of discussion on this issue, but it's not going to cover, you're still going to get assessed on your street. You're going to get assessed for stormwater, you're going to get assessed for sanitary sewer and water laterals. Those are all going to be assessable yet. So if you think you're only paying $4.50 a month, or $450 a month, and that's all you'll pay, and your street gets redone or something like that, that's not the case. You'll still be assessed for those three things. So I don't know if this is the right option. I, but we have to do something. We have to move forward, because it's costing the taxpayers more money the longer we delay this, or we stay status quo. We can stay status quo and keep assessing. But I don't think the wheel tax, to citizens, but to the businesses, they get assessed. How, that's not going to work either. So I just think that the Long Range Finance Committee did their homework, they brought something forward, we have looked at different options, and is this the fair way? I don't really know. Is assessments fair? I don't know. I paid assessment for my street several years ago, too, and I paid it, you know, had to pay it off, and I've had to pay sidewalk rehab off. So anything we vote on up here affects us the same, it affects property owners sitting out in the audience and listening on TV and radio. So it's not an easy decision, and we do have to represent all the citizens of Oshkosh. So our vote is very important tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Peschel.
Well, the seesaw of this decision, so. I might be the only one up here that says that they're actually in favor, as a resident, of the current special assessment policy. That doesn't mean that I don't think that it should be changed or modified or looked at. I think when some things are unknown, it's just easier to stick with what we know. And so with that said, I, I found some elements, and I don't want to highlight everything that, that everyone said or anything, but I did find some elements that I thought were ones that were warranted. So I actually agree, and I'll actually enjoy a wheel tax. I've actually proposed it, sorry, Mr. Miller, it didn't get a second, so, many years ago, but for transit, not for streets. So, so I feel that it's a good method. I don't actually, I feel that it's probably a good method in this case. My concern is the, is the bigger picture, the uncertainty of what the bigger picture for not just residents, but also business owners that exist and operate in Oshkosh. To me, I think this is a very clear proposal, is how, is how it clearly benefits the residents, and it has a lot to learn or to come to find out standards, how it relates to small and large business owners. So with that, I still believe there's something else out there. The, and I don't actually agree with the legal ramifications of this. This utility fee has been utilized in not just five states across the country, it's more like 10 states, and several states and communities are utilizing this successfully. I just haven't had enough time to realize whether what they're doing is beneficial in their community versus our community. And I think that's why we're up here, is to look at the full picture of our- And I think that's why we're up here, is to look at the full picture of our, of our community. So, I applaud the work that all the staff have put into this. I applaud the work that residents and business owners who are residents in our community have brought to us on this, and I applaud the work that Mr. Muggerhour has put in to this as well. So, but I think as it is now, I'm just going to stick with, with what I know.
Councilmember Allison Asby.
Thank you. So, just one thing, I want to be clear, and no matter how, how this ends up tonight or how the direction that we go in, but irregardless, I think it's, it's important to say that it shouldn't be residential against business. It should be, it should be, it's beneficial, it's beneficial to the businesses to have residential properties. It is very, it is very beneficial to our residents to have our business owners. Our business community is what drives economic development in this town, and I really don't want the conversation to go in that direction. So, but one of the things that I wanted to address, and I apologize because I don't remember which gentleman brought it up, but, you know, somebody did address the monthly billing versus quarterly. To my knowledge, one does not have to do with the other. I think the timing of going from quarterly to monthly, I think, is coincidental, at least from my perspective, as well as the, my fellow colleagues, I've never ever uttered them, or heard them utter a word that the two would go hand in hand. I can say, from, from our perspective, we've heard from a number of business owners, as well as residential, you know, that to be able to do monthly budgeting versus quarterly budgeting was certainly advantageous. Was it 100%? No, I, I don't remember that it being that. But I did want to address that because I do truly believe in my heart that one did not have anything to do with the other. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Thank you. I'm really struggling with this one. As an elected official, you want to be fair to everybody. Some of us that are going to pay this, we're all residents. The business owners, some of them are residents, some of them live outside the community. It's just a hard thing without the residents. There would be no businesses, and without the businesses, there'd be no residents. I think that a lot of times, businesses and larger corporations, and especially the ones that are going to get the $5,400 fee assessed to them yearly, that's a drop in the bucket. It's not going to affect them whatsoever. I think a lot of the small businesses are going to be assessed much less, and they would be the ones hurting as well from having to pay an assessment. I look at residents that have paid it already. It might not be fair, but at some point, we just got to draw a line and say this is what it's going to be. There's laws that go into effect federally. There's talk of a student loan payoff program. Is that fair to the people that have paid their loans off already? No, but it would help future generations, future children of those people that have already paid. This could stop hardship from people that would be paying it in the future. And I think as a community, we can all just suck it up and pay a couple of dollars here and there, the cost of a McDonald's meal, or the cost of selling a couple, few less tires if you have a auto shop. So, I think as a community, I think we just need to come together and say, it isn't always fair, but life isn't fair. Thank you.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. Couple of questions, I think, for staff. And actually, I kind of want to build off of Deputy Mayor Herman's comments. Deputy Mayor Herman made the comment that if we don't do this, it costs us $270,000 right away a month. Or if we pass it, it costs us, saves us 100, 1 million. Break down how that, how that, how that comes about, just so that the, the public can understand that juxtaposition.
Sure. The first question has to do with the $270,000. That's basically the 3.25 million annual revenue from the fee divided by 12. So, every month we do delay action, we're foregoing $273,000. That will catch up with us because the intent was to eliminate special assessments this year, and every month we fall behind is one month that we're not going to be able to collect either special assessments or a fee. So, that's the one. What Councilmember Herman's referring to with respect to the million dollars is that a few years ago, because of the position of our special assessment fund, we started to borrow to make sure that the cash flow in that fund was okay. There are so many people who have taken advantage of the, the longer-term borrowing that, from a cash flow standpoint, we were going to get paid a lot later, so we needed to do something to keep that fund financially intact. In reality, when, when the fund is reconciled at the end, it'll, it'll break even, but from a cash flow standpoint, we've needed to, to put money into that fund to keep it going.
Okay. I have one more.
One more. I'm going to weigh in, too, at some point here.
So, so every month, residents, business owners will pay a certain fee, or they'll do it annually, correct?
It will be put on the utility bill, so it'll be $450 a month for residences and then $450 per development area unit with a maximum of 100.
Okay. So, when we get that money every month, where does it go?
We will, we will establish a dedicated transportation utility fund so that the funds remain there, and they'll be used to pay for, in lieu of, to replace the special assessments as the funding source. It's not intended to replace any city, current city contribution for that. The city will continue to contribute general, either general obligation borrowing to do that or general taxes to do that.
All right. And so, rule of thumb is that if the money's raised for that, it has to be used for that, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Can't be used to balance out any other, any other construction-related or any other types of benefits to the community other than what we are taking the money for?
Yeah, and that's why we gave you the general use of the $4.50 with sidewalks, pavement, asphalt, and the other programs that we, that we currently special assess for.
Okay. And how often, I'm sorry, that's way more than one question, I'm sorry. And how often do, if this were to be passed, how often do you expect to review the, the inflation of it?
What we plan to do is to, we're going to review our costs on an annual basis, and that does fluctuate. It goes up and it does go down with construction costs, you know, any commodity or labor, as somebody mentioned earlier, those can take it up and down. What we did was a five-year average to come up with the initial number, but we didn't, we didn't add an inflation factor because we know in more recent years, the cost has been higher. So, we've acknowledged that and taken that into consideration as we've developed this, this fee structure.
So, there's no, so it's kind of open? It's an open-ended fee that could change from year to year?
Yeah, and I think, you know, you know, some of the concerns that have been expressed about utility fees are legitimate, but that is because we have, after the floods of 2008, we recognized we needed to do something. So, yeah, the, the stormwater fee has gone up because we have more, we've, in some cases, the first few years, we geometrically increased the amount of projects we were doing. Now, we've kind of leveled that off, but we're still playing catch-up for that. In this case, this is really to maintain the status quo in terms of street projects. You know, should we do more? That's another discussion for another day, but certainly, this is, this purpose of this is to replace the current special assessments as a funding source.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I just, I just have a few things to say. First of all, I want to thank everyone that emailed, called, spoke to us individually, some with very thoughtful comments or ways of approaching this, even those who were, let's say, less than friendly about it. The input is appreciated. The one thing is, I agree with Councilmember Allison Asby. As councilmembers, you know, it's not appreciated, you know, the kind of threatening tone that, while also suggesting that we're working together, that, that's disappointing. But I will say that in every situation, when speaking or listening to those who gave the information, you know, there was thought put into it, and so this decision is, is difficult. City residents, homeowners, and small businesses kind of already subsidize those from out of town by way of a number of mechanisms. Residents and small business are subsidizing reduced assessments by some of the larger big-box stores through Dark Store. We have a housing affordability issue, not just in this city, but in this state and in this country. And this is one thing that we can do to make housing more affordable, which is a mutual benefit to both business and economic development and our residents. And as City Manager, you know, referenced, we, we have looked at, over the last few years, having to borrow because more people were taking the option of that extended payback period, and the collection takes longer for that. So, I will be supporting this as it stands, and if we have no other discussion, lastly...
One question, Mr. Roloff.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, I think you and I had a brief discussion last week. If we took the, you said we could fund the sidewalk rehab program, or how, how did we end that discussion? You, you gave me some options, and I didn't write them down.
Yeah. The question was if we wanted to exclude the sidewalks from the transportation fee, yet also eliminate the special assessments for sidewalks, how could that be done? And as you referenced earlier, we already are borrowing $1 million for cash flow purposes for the, the special assessment fund. We could simply substitute the borrowing for the sidewalks and just have the sidewalks funded and eliminate special assessments and fund it that way. What that means is the city will be participating, the general taxpayer will pay for that. That could eliminate that portion of the fee. It's roughly, as, as the, as the pie chart indicates, about $1.11. So, that would drop it to $3.39 if, if the council did that, or some amount in between, depending on if they wanted to eliminate all of it or some of it.
Yeah. I guess my only thought on the sidewalk rehab is, that's a little bit of a compromise. You know, I think a property owner that has sidewalk in front of his house should have some responsibility maintaining it, which he does, obviously, but when it needs to be replaced, it's just that. I think keeping new sidewalks in there, driveway aprons, concrete paving, asphalt paving of our streets is, is good, but I guess I'll make a, I'd like to make an amendment to the ordinance, 19-436, to take the sidewalk rehabilitation program out of the ordinance.
Before you do that, I want to ask a follow-up question. Mr. Roloff, if that were done, how would that equate to the borrowing that we were just discussing about the special assessments? How does that compare?
Well, we, we borrow, it's sometimes even more than what Councilmember Herman talked about. It's, it's a million dollars at a minimum annually that we borrow for, to fund the special assessment fund out of our $12.4 million cap that we've, we've instituted ourselves. That's a self-imposed cap that we've done. So, $1 million out of that, we would simply take $800,000 and use it for sidewalk borrowing because we'll no longer need to special, we won't need to borrow for special assessments anymore because that fund will eventually pay itself off and cease to exist. I hope I answered that, Madam Mayor.
Yes, so you have a motion to amend?
Yeah, and really, all that amendment, I guess I'm going to make it so every council member understands, I want the citizens to pay for the rehab. So, that we would be assessing for sidewalk rehabilitation, just like we'll be assessing for stormwater, sanitary, and water laterals. So, this would be an assessment to the homeowner and the property owners.
So, not the borrowing that Mr. Roloff...
Not the borrowing unless council wants to go that direction. Right now, my amendment is to take it out, and we can either discuss it as a separate item or future item, but take it out of, currently take it out of the ordinance currently. Is that clear to the city attorney and to the clerk?
So, you want to remove it for special, for separate discussion?
Yeah. How we'll fund the sidewalk rehab program, yeah, as a separate discussion item. But right now, I just want to take it out of the ordinance, and we can then decide if we want to put it back on for discussion in the next council meeting, because once we remove it, I don't think we can re-discuss that item, right? It would have to come back at a future council meeting, or could we discuss that yet tonight if we wanted to? The rehab program. If we approved it and it came out, can we already discuss it more tonight, or would we have to put it on, like, say, the next council agenda as an agenda item to discuss?
I don't see why you couldn't discuss it. I mean, this, they're all on the table here, so.
Okay.
They're all legit.
Okay. So, for now, my amendment to the, to ordinance, 19-436, is to take the sidewalk rehabilitation program out of the ordinance.
I second that.
I just had a question before I vote on that. So, to be clear, approximately, the $450 a month would go down to about $350, then $4,500 down to $3,500 for business, max business payouts.
Yeah, it would be roughly $3.39 because we specifically identified $1.11 as part of the $4.50, so $3.39.
That's on the borrowing.
Okay, the borrowing, and I wouldn't, I would still want it to be covered by the city, because I believe that the rehabilitation areas are probably the least economically-supported areas in the city, where those fees would affect them more than they would the nicer neighborhoods that don't need the new sidewalks. So, I still think it's hurting the people that need the most help in the city, and we're only as good as the people that need the most help.
Don't, we need to confirm the second for discussion?
We have a second.
Okay.
Discussion on the amendment removing the sidewalk from, the sidewalk rehab from this proposal. Then we can have a separate discussion about the way in which that would be paid. So, further discussion on removal. Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got concerns with, with pulling that. It's part of a larger issue. It's an entire transportation system that we all participate in, we all use, and we all benefit from. There are some advantages to having it included in the program as well on the city side. That's fair to say. We spend a considerable amount of time specifically with the sidewalk rehabilitation program, administering it and billing it and just tracking it. It's a huge cost savings administratively, and it's a way to become more efficient, as well as from the resident and the business side. Anytime the, the guy walks around with the can and the spray paint, starts marking your squares in the fall, first thing everybody does is go outside and make sure that you agree with that and start arguing with the guy to try, to start taking one or two of those off. If it's included in this, if it's included in the plan and it's funded, we can stop arguing about one and two squares here and there and make sure that the entire sidewalk system is safe for all users, for all levels of mobility. So, I have concerns with removing that and still specially assessing it. I think it also creates even, it creates a second layer of confusion then, because we've been talking about, you know, removing special assessments, and that just creates another opportunity for confusion among the, among the taxpayers.
And I would agree that removing that creates an inequity in terms of the entire transportation system. I think we have to look at this as a network. It's not my street, it's not your street, it's our streets, and the connections between the street and the businesses and the residences are mutually beneficial. So, I won't be supporting removal, and, and we need to see if we have others that want to speak on that. And we need to see if we have others that want to speak on that. All right. So we'll be voting on just the removal and the amendment of the sidewalk removed from the proposal. All right. Could you please call the roll?
Allison Osby? No. Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
No.
Crozey?
No.
Pascal?
No.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Lost two five.
So now we will bring back for vote as proposed nineteen four thirty-six. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Allison Osby? No. Herman?
No.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Pascal?
No.
Miller?
No.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Lost three four.
All right. Moving on. New ordinances. Councilmember Mugerower.
Madam Mayor, we've been going about two hours. It may be appropriate to maybe take a short recess, allow the audience to clear out and meet back here in a few moments.
Will adjourn?
Five minutes?
Five minutes? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Moving on to new ordinances.
Who's got a whistle?
Nineteen four thirty-seven. There would be no action taken on these items. Approve amendment to Chapter nineteen, Section nineteen dash four T of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code defining Bowen Street Fishing Dock Park. Again, no action. Ordinance nineteen four thirty-eight designate... I'm sorry. Do we have anyone registered to speak on that?
No one has signed up. Thank you, Mayor.
Nineteen four thirty-eight designate bike lanes and restrict parking on portions of Northwestfield and North Keller Streets. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one has signed up for that.
And no action on that item either. Nineteen four thirty-nine, approve temporary closure of Pearson Street from Nicolay Avenue to East Packer Avenue. Any registered to speak?
No one is registered for that topic.
All right. And new ordinance nineteen dash four four zero, approve request to attach to the city from Town of Black Wolf, McFarlane voluntary attachment, one sixty-seven West Wacca Avenue. Petitioner requests waiving of second reading. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No one is registered.
All right. Can we bring that back to council for a motion and a second? Councilmember Mugerower.
Madam Mayor, I move to waive the rules and adopt them in the first reading.
Second.
Discussion on waiving the rules? Councilmember Pascal?
Mr. Roloff, can you please provide the rationale as to the benefit to waive the rules?
You asked Mark.
Oh, Mark. Mr. Lyons?
That's what I thought you said. Yeah. The current property owner is in the process of selling their home. Their septic system has failed. And as this is in part of the area that's covered under the border agreement, at that point, they're required to connect to municipal services. And they'd like to get this resolved as quickly as they can so they can be attached into the city, proceed with the sale of the home.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on... for waiving the rules. Any further discussion? We please take the roll.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right. And we'll bring nineteen four forty, approve request to attach to the city from Town of Black Wolf, McFarlane voluntary attachment, one sixty-seven West Wacca Avenue. Petitioner requests... we already waived the second reading. So we'll now bring it for a motion and a second.
Second.
Discussion. No further discussion. We'll bring it back for roll call.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
New resolutions nineteen dash four forty-one, approve specific implementation plan for fencing at two fifteen Church Avenue. Plan commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak on four forty-one?
No one is registered.
All right. Council, motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Nothing further. We'll go ahead and take the roll on four forty-one.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is nineteen four forty-two, approve tax increment District Number Thirty-Seven project plan, designate tax increment District Number Thirty-Seven boundaries and create tax increment District Number Thirty-Seven Aviation Plaza redevelopment. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
Rob Clayman, one twenty Jackson Street.
Mr. Clayman, still here?
Yep.
All right.
And he dresses better than his boss.
That's debatable. But I'll take you up on that bill. Again, thanks. Rob Clayman, one twenty Jackson Street. I'm here in my role as Senior VP of Economic Development for the Oshkosh Chamber. Basically, I know Allen and Company were going to drive the project, but I want to encourage you to support the overall development by approving the application for the creation of TIF thirty-seven tonight. We've been assisting and supporting the Masters Group for many years to locate a restaurant and entertainment facility here at Oshkosh Stadium, way back to when they purchased the site back in September of two thousand and thirteen. We toured their operations and very reputable, doing a great job down there in Hartford. We're very excited to see their proposal coming to fruition after much work and effort, along with the redevelopment of the former J.C. Penney Building, which is part of this development proposal for the expansion of local business Extreme Customs, which is a fast-growing business, and also solidifying Rogan's presence here in Oshkosh. We see this as a win-win scenario for the developers of the site, the City of Oshkosh, residents, businesses in the area, our region, and our residents, all the things that are proposed for this development. This really is going to ensure, if it passes tonight, the redevelopment of a longtime vacant site. It's really a gateway entrance to Oshkosh at the intersection of Highway forty-four and I forty-one. You know, the Walmart building's been sitting vacant here since... the site anyways, since Walmart vacated in two thousand and three. It's been vacant since then. There used to be a building there. It was torn down in oh-seven. And J.C. Penney Building's been vacant since two thousand and fifteen. So that's a long time for a site like this. This will have an impact on the surrounding businesses. I mean, you think of the businesses in the area of Aviation Plaza, EAA, Horizon Outlet, Southwest Industrial Park, many other businesses in the area. The... it's a visible site. The activity that's going to draw there is going to be really good for that area of town. As you've heard already... you haven't heard that yet tonight, but you probably will. The Mine Shaft projects that they'll draw over three hundred thousand people to Oshkosh from outside of a ten-mile radius. You know, that's good. That's people that are... want to do economic business from outside of our area in Oshkosh. That's going to draw dollars to the community. It will really breathe life into this underutilized site. Don't necessarily want to call it a blighted site, but it's underutilized, underperforming property for many years when you have twenty-six and a half acres. Your approval tonight, this application, will solidify WDC idle sites grant for five hundred thousand dollars, which has already been approved, to WDC for the entire site. So that's very positive to assist with this redevelopment and obviously retaining Extreme Customs in the community with forty jobs. And they're a high-growth company, an internet-based company. I know you've heard all about them, but there... obviously, there's more growth to come with that company and then Rogan's presence here as well. It could also help facilitate, you know, some code compliance, stormwater management issues on this site and other improvements. You know, could have a positive impact downstream. Maybe that's minimal, but you know, any little bit will help there. The TIF that's proposed is an eleven-year payback, which is unusual. A lot of times, you'll see these go out twenty-seven years. And a special note, a pay-go-TIF. It's... all these funds are being... TIF-eligible funds are being fronted by the developer. These are all financed by the developer upfront. The Mine Shaft project, real quickly there, it's a family entertainment facility. We have heard from countless people at the Chamber that we don't have a business of this type in Oshkosh. People are having to drive north, having to drive south to find this type of entertainment facility for birthday parties, children's activities, youth sports events. It would be great to have this here in Oshkosh. The Masters, long, successful track record. I won't go into the depth that I have here, but really, you know, they've been... they've owned the Mine Shaft since nineteen seventy-six. I think it was called the Commodore at first. But... and they're still there, you know, one of the most successful restaurants we have in the state, if not the Midwest. Fox and Hounds in Hubertus, they started in two thousand and six, very successful, still in business. to come with that company, and then Rogan's presence here as well. It could also help facilitate, you know, some code-compliant stormwater management issues on this site and other improvements, you know, could have a positive impact downstream. Maybe that's minimal, but you know, any little bit will help there. The TIF that's proposed is an 11-year payback, which is unusual. A lot of times you'll see these go out 27 years, and a special note, a pay-go TIF, it's, all these funds are being, TIF-eligible funds are being fronted by the developer. These are all financed by the developer upfront. The Mine Shaft project, real quickly there, it's a family entertainment facility, we have heard from countless people at the Chamber that we don't have a business of this type in Oshkosh, people are having to drive north, having to drive south to find this type of entertainment facility for birthday parties, children's activities, youth sports events, it would be great to have this here in Oshkosh. The Masters, long successful track record, I won't go into the depth that I have here, but really, you know, they've been, they've owned the Mine Shaft since 1976, I think it was called the Commodore at first, but, and they're still, they're, you know, one of the most successful restaurants we have in the state of not the Midwest. Fox and Hounds in Hubertus, they started in 2006, very successful, still in business, doing very well. So we're very lucky to have somebody that's looking to invest that amount of money, I mean, this overall project over 20 million, but you know, they're bringing 15 million or more to Oshkosh from outside the community. It doesn't happen overnight, or it doesn't happen every day. And of course, you know, reutilizing the J.C. Penney Building with Extreme Customs, and what they're going to do is going to be very positive for that, for that area. So without being redundant, just in conclusion, I just want to reaffirm that this appears to be a win-win situation for everybody, and certainly encourage your support of this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else registered?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for motion in a second, 19-442.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr., I don't know, Mr. Rol, I guess Mr. Davis can answer this question. In our TIF agreement, do we have anything that says if any one or three of the parties drops out or off, does not follow through, does the TIF come back? Does it dissolve? What protection do we have? Because it's unique, a three-party TIF, which we, I don't believe in my, going on 10 years on council, we've had three parties to a TIF, so what protection do we have if one of them would fall off the table?
An excellent question, and I'm not really prepared to answer that one because we're working on the development agreements right now. I am expecting to have three different development agreements, and they are going to be interchangeable so that the what-if scenarios get played out in all the agreements. So we're bringing that, the development agreements up in August for your review. So right now, I expect we'll have that in the development agreements, but I don't have that in front of you today. This is just the TIF part.
Is there anything in our TIF policy that talks about, I mean?
Our imagination did not include a three-party...
But, but overall, and I, we have...
It meets all the other criteria for a TIF creation, and just to reiterate, this is going into the public infrastructure, and these projects are so tied together, the three owners almost can't do it without the cooperation of all three of them.
Right, okay. And I, we got Eller's report, and that was all good, and so, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. Mr. Herman took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah, it's our conversation this morning.
Yeah, City Manager Roloff and I had that discussion earlier, in which I think all three should have to perform together in order to, so I don't think it's a, like, should we put it in, I think it should be mandated by council that it's in, because again, we're looking at this as an overall, a district, and not one particular business, so I would like to see that, that language added. They're all in, together. So, so I do appreciate the, the presentation by Mr. Clayman, if he's still here. One of the things that certainly has come up over the last three to four weeks is, when we have the benefit and the opportunity to have a charged issue as the transportation utility fee, it certainly gives you an opportunity to have a wide range of discussions with both those that are residents as well as businesses. And again, overwhelming that they would like to see something done with Aviation Plaza, just because it has been an eyesore for so long, it is an area of opportunity. Again, I agree, we need to do something with it, there's a number of benefits, especially addressing some of the old infrastructure that's there, it is a pay-go, and so at this point, and at where it's at right now, I'm more than happy to support the project. But again, I want to make very clear that, you know, we need to see the developers' agreement in order to continue to have the discussion. I did think, though, that the, the length of, of the agreement would be 10 years, is it 11 years?
Since he mentioned that, I didn't have an opportunity to look that up. Does Mr. Roman know that off the top of his head? Our Ellers, the assistance that we got from Ellers in creating this, Ellers went through all the numbers, and I believe it was supposed to be 10 years, so I'm looking it up.
Mr. Heschel?
Seven years to repay the incentive according to the plan.
Frank, come on in, please.
I'm sorry.
Microphone, thank you.
Good evening. Seven years to play, to pay the development incentive, and then there is also a provision for additional infrastructure project costs that would go out to possibly 15 or 16 years. When you do a renovation TIF district rather than a blight, it's still 27 years, so you do have that amount of time, but this is obviously intended to be a much more shorter period to have this taken care of.
Your name, sir?
Sorry, Frank Roman from Ellers Associates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager, do you have something else?
It's just in response to, so, because Councilmember Allison Osby had asked me a similar question that Deputy Mayor Herman just asked, but what we have had experience with, even though it's not specifically what Deputy Mayor Herman referred to, we've had tax decrement districts where we have a pay-go with one individual business, and that business has performed in accordance with the, with their agreement, and as we anticipated, but the overall district has an issue, and that has created cash flow issues. Recognizing that, and I think the city attorney referred to, you know, every TIF district is different, what we would look at here is making sure that the, the overall increment of the district must be positive for any payment to occur, and then there would be a maximum that each individual would receive within their own agreement. That's how we've given direction to staff to prepare that, and that's what Ms. Lawrenson is working with, our outside counsel, on putting that type of protection in the agreement, because even though we haven't had that specific case, we have had districts where pay-go, South Shore, think of the Brian Burns Development, Mr. Burns has performed absolutely correctly in accordance with it, but because of the overall district has gone down, we actually have a cash flow problem, because we have, we're required to pay him, but we don't have enough tax rem for the rest of the district. We're putting protections in here so that we're going to be, we're going to be okay.
Councilmember Mugerower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I have a question and a comment for Mr. Masters, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and then I just, then I'll talk about my comments on the TIF. I'll wait till you come up. I know before the council meeting tonight, I approached you, and just wanted to say publicly thank you for your help this week with EAA, and the weather we received, and the grounds of the EAA not being very welcoming to all the thousands of visitors, and that you and your property were welcoming and took them in very quickly, and that's very appreciated in the city, especially with the impact that EAA has.
Thank you.
So thank you for that, I really appreciate that. One question, and it's really only one, and I think it's an easy one, but why Oshkosh?
Well, for one, we were the beverage providers at Country USA and Rock USA for 21 years, right? So we just stopped doing that like two or three years ago, right? So, and you know, we got to know hundreds, literally thousands of people through employment with us, we would hire about 400 Oshkosh people every year to work for us, and we just, from every angle, in what the business that we're in, like, I'll give you an example, like, in Hartford, if we have, let's say, a grade school basketball tournament at one of our local schools, right, that's a big deal in Hartford, right? You know, so we would, our business would be just packed really all weekend, because game room is a big feature of what we do. So what we like about Oshkosh is it's called the City of Events, right? So you have four major events, and you have literally hundreds of other smaller events, which should all impact us greatly, you know? We're on the very busy highway, right? You know, you've got industrial to the west, to the east, you've got, you know, shopping, which Hartford has none, really, we have a Walmart, right? But that's about all we have, right? So, so in our business, what it's about is events that happen, and people being out and wanting something to do during or after that event, and we provide an interesting situation for families, right? So it used to be, years ago, we were more of a nightclub at nights and things like, but those days are kind of gone with the drinking and driving laws and whatever, so we kind of replaced that with the game room aspect of what we do. So, so our game room will be up here three times the size of the one that we have in Hartford, and that game room that we have there is very successful. So it gives us an edge over, like, a lot of people are thinking, boy, restaurant, you know, there's high failure rate, right? You know, and I'll agree with that, right? But I've been at my restaurant for 44 years, right? So I, I mean, I would say in the restaurant industry, everybody knows about the Mine Shaft in southeastern Wisconsin, right? And, and so what we just have adapted to what we needed to adapt, right? So, so the game room thing has replaced that nighttime nightclub-type thing, and, and we're, we're kind of like more of a family place now. We, we probably will have, if we have entertainment at all, it would maybe be a one-piece or two-piece in the suburb area until 11 o'clock at night or something, so. It's just, it's just a different choice for people, and, and Oshkosh offers everything that we're looking for. We could have gone to Milwaukee, we've been invited to many communities, you know, we've had, I've had fielded 100 calls over the years, of people saying, please come and do a Mine Shaft in our community, we could really use something, whatever. We attempted to do this, I don't know if you know, way back, maybe 20 years ago, we were going to be in the 100 block, right? But at that time, we had a health issue in our field, and it didn't work out for us. But we never gave up on our idea of coming to Oshkosh. We, we love Oshkosh, we think it's the perfect place for us, it's a little far away from our other two operations, but you know, we're going to move our office up here, and we'll have one central office for all three of our businesses, and from every angle, just the 66,000 cars that go by every day, just the EAA, right? You know, so when, when the EAA called me, right, you know, and they, they asked if they could use the lot, I said, you know, listen, I, here's my, my response was, we want to be a good neighbor, we're, hopefully we're going to be coming up here soon, and you know, I said, we don't need to charge you anything, we just, you know, we wanted an insurance certificate is all they wanted, to make sure somebody got hurt or whatever. But it's part of what we want to do is be that really good neighbor in Oshkosh, right? So we'll try to get in and about a lot of the things that are happening up here, right? So, I mean, so, Oshkosh was, we never changed our mind once we made up our mind, right? It just took us a long time to get here. And then another, an answer to that partially too is, when you go to get a loan for the bar/restaurant business, you know, almost every bank in the state would definitely say no to you, right? But because of our long-term history, we were able to get a bank to finally finance a large portion, and then I've been saving for many years to make it happen, right? So, so here we are, you know, I know we're asking for a little help, but you know, it's, it's kind of gets us to the finish line, you know, so.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Ms. Nyforth or Mr. Davis? If I were to say, let's just say this, this entire agreement or the potential full TIF for the three parcels wasn't here, and Mr. Riley with Extreme Customs had come to us looking to develop the J.C. Penney site, and it was just that entity, just that business, is it fair to say that if he was asking for some assistance on just that site, it would probably be pretty darn close to the full package that we're looking at here for the TIF increment that's being asked?
You are correct. With the improvements needed and the location where the improvements need to be, the costs would be there for Extreme regardless. If they wouldn't be able to put their stormwater management in that northwest corner of the site, they would have to work on something on their own site, probably underground storage perhaps, which would really drive up the cost, so the costs would be pretty close to the same.
So for the same amount of potential ask, we're getting a much larger development on a underutilized, maybe not necessarily blighted, but underutilized site?
With them, all of them working together, they're all using the same resources, and they're saving money, it's giving the city utilities, public utilities are code compliant, and it is a win-win situation.
Thank you. I don't think it's underestimation to say that I was less than supportive of this from the get-go. I gave Mr. Hess a hard time very early on, we've had some good discussions, but you know, every once in a while you have a conversation with somebody in the community, and it just, you know, you don't expect it, but it has a good positive impact on you. And I had a conversation with a restaurateur who has been in this community for decades, and he talked about how could the restaurant community not be supportive of the Mine Shaft's enterprise and this potential development for this whole site? It was a good conversation, hadn't anticipated having it, and very supportive of the entire concept, and just improving this gateway, and improving the offering to the people of Oshkosh. And I hadn't anticipated that, because most of the conversations I was having with personal, individual businesses was, you know, we're going to have some economic, this is going to have an economic impact on us, that we're going to lose, you know, potential employees, and the impact that it will have, the ripple effect potentially within the restaurant community. But we've got the chamber supporting it, GoWDC has supported it, and that conversation I had with that longstanding restaurateur was, was definitely impactful, that he changed my mind on what this could potentially do for Oshkosh, and in the end, I'm going to support this.
So I do have a couple of comments, just, and that is that initially I wasn't especially enthusiastic, but what I will say is that, you know, this is a short ask and a small ask, and those are things that are in keeping with the TIF policy that this council put together with staff. And so the, the fact that it is helping others along the way, it's not just, you know, one proposal coming forward, it's, it's the three, that kind of trifecta, if you will, and the stormwater issues that addresses, the corridor issues, as Councilmember Mugerower indicated. And, and one really important thing that people should know is that this site has such stringent limitations on what can go there, that I feel like it does meet the but for, and I also want to thank Mr. Hess and, and those who put together the wage information. Very early on, we were given a presentation, and council asked about wages of the jobs that were anticipated, and at that time, it wasn't very fleshed out, but this week, we did receive very specific, concrete information on that, and I appreciate that. So for those reasons, I will be supporting this. Oh, Mr. Davis?
And to follow up on your comments regarding the timeline, I did have an opportunity to look it up in the TIF plan, and the payments would start in 2022 and end in 2028, so there's about seven years worth of payments, and we have to add two years at the beginning because those payments don't take effect until they've been assessed and paid those property taxes. So it is the fastest payoff that we've had for a TIF, for a pay-go, and then as Mr. Roman suggested, we do have room in the TIF for other public infrastructure improvements, should the council want to do that after year seven of the, the pay-go is paid off.
And then I did have one kind of lingering concern, and, and call me a little conservative on the building envelope piece of it, but, and that is, we are still able to put something in the redevelopment agreement regarding the building itself, should, God forbid, it not succeed, and it goes dark and vacant like those prior to it, that there can be some responsibility for that.
Yes, we'll specifically include that for that, that structure.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Masters and your investors, I just want to say thank you for helping out EAA again, just echo those thoughts. That, that tells me a lot about your character, I think being a great neighbor is very important, and I want to thank you for thinking of Oshkosh, and welcome here, so thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, Clerk, can you please call the roll on 19-442?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution 19-443, approve amendment to the 2019 operations budget for TIF 37 Aviation Plaza, $35,000. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No one is registered.
Okay, bring it back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Just a quick question, Mr. Davis, what is that $35,000 amendment, just briefly?
Yes, that is the, since this project came about after the budget was adopted, to hire Ellers and our outside counsel, we have to budget for that, so we're creating this budget amendment. The costs would be covered by the applicant, so it would be budget-neutral for the city, but we do have to include this in the budget now because we do have some outside direct costs associated with creating the TIF.
But that gets covered, you said, by...
And that's covered by their application fee, or whatever we need to build them, whatever it takes to actually create this district.
Okay.
This is just our best guess for 2019 as to what it would take to finish this, creating this TIF.
All right. Clerk, can you please call the roll on 19-444, or I'm sorry, 443?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Crozey?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding item number 45, it would be appropriate for council to make a motion, just simply withdraw this motion.
Certainly. So, 19-444 established 2019 transportation utility fees. I assume we don't have anybody registered to speak since that did not pass earlier.
We did have a gentleman, Dan Shea. I don't see him.
He's, he's not going to mind.
Right, okay. So, back to council for motion in a second, so that we can withdraw.
Do we need to make a motion to...
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw. Okay.
Who's making the motion to withdraw?
Deputy Mayor Herman. Oh.
I'll make a motion to withdraw Resolution 19-444.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Moeberhauer.
Aye.
Crozey.
Aye.
Pascal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven, withdrawn.
Next, we have council discussion, direction of City Manager, future agenda items. Future agenda items, budget workshop, July 31st, 5:00 p.m., Room 404. That's our first budget workshop. Councilmember Pascal.
Sure, thank you. Are we going to receive, like, an agenda for the budget workshop?
We do have a, a general agenda. We are, we're going to present the information at the meeting, but yeah, there's a gen, pretty much what it's going to involve is personnel cost projections for 2020 based on current staffing levels authorized by council, and then just general direction in terms of what we're asking staff to do as they prepare their budgets, and then get some feedback from council based on that. Formats are pretty similar, but, but we'll get you the general agenda, so you can see that, but the, the handouts and everything, we'll, we'll give them to you on Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
And next, we have a workshop on the policy for acquiring and disposing of real estate, August 13th at 5:00 p.m. I think all of council received those documents from staff.
Thank you.
Second budget workshop, August 21st at 5:00 p.m. Which would include, on this second budget workshop, what's the content?
The second budget workshop will, the first item is the presentation of the 2018 annual audit, and then mid-year, mid-year financials, so pretty much get a snapshot of where we're at, and then the rest will be in the next agenda. I'm just at a loss right now, but those are the two primary things. So, the representatives from, from Clifton Larson will be here, and that's, that's probably the big...
Could we have, I, I'm sorry, going back to item A, the first budget workshop on the personnel, could we have that agenda a little bit ahead of time? Sometimes, you know, council would like to do a little homework beforehand.
Yes, we can give you the agenda itself, the, the...
Right.
Package of information, not necessarily, but you'll, we'll give you a whole outline of things that we plan to discuss and give you a rough idea. But pretty much, we take a look at staffing levels and say, here's what we have budgeted in 2019, assuming the current staffing levels, this is what we're looking at. The real idea behind that is to give you an idea of what that alone is going to do on, in terms of the levy. So, we're getting final numbers, or, I shouldn't say final, we're getting preliminary numbers from our health insurance provider and our dental provider about what those would cost so that we can factor those all in. And we have a pretty good idea with our union contracts that are, we're in the midst of our, we'll enter our third of three years in 2020, so we'll have a good idea of what you can expect 2020 to look like with no staffing changes whatsoever. But we'll get you a rough, we'll get you the outline.
Is everybody available on those dates that we know?
No, I just...
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. I will actually be out of the area at a conference for three days, so I will not be available for that second budget workshop.
Second round of citizen statements to council. Does that look like we have anyone? So, they bailed on us. Councilmember announcements and statements? Seeing none. Next, on to, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a shout-out to EAA. It's their 50th anniversary, and they were kind enough to open up the gates to all Oshkosh citizens on Monday. It was free for all Oshkosh citizens, so I think that was awesome. 50 years and going strong. The other thing, I don't know if many people realize this, but the economic development, or the economic impact they have, I watched one of their studies one time, and they actually bring in more money to the area here in Oshkosh than an entire Green Bay Packers season brings into Green Bay. That, that's how important these people are to us, and I just want to thank them and wish them good luck this year.
Okay. Last, we have City Manager announcements and statements, status of outstanding issues.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the list of a status of outstanding issues, a couple, a couple that I want to point out, under administrative services, about two-thirds of the way down, the KPIs, the dashboard is live as of today. I've, I've, you know, taken a, a look at a couple of them, a couple little glitches, but it looks really cool. I'm not sure if Jake, oh, there you go. So, it's all based on our strategic plan, but Jake, if you could scroll to the bottom of the screen on this one, just to give them a rough idea, there's a, a link to all of the departmental key performance indicators, or KPIs, at the bottom of the screen. Keep scrolling, Jake. Right down there, you'll see all the departments that are listed, so you can get an idea of what the, you can pick your favorite department and click on the KPIs, and they're all there. In addition, we also have the, the regular reports that you've been receiving under quarterly, that those are the KPIs. Each department has submitted KPIs, and those are live to look at. And then, if you could scroll back, Jake, in addition to the KPIs, we still have the traditional report that has how we're doing on achieving our strategic objectives, and those are all based on the, the strategic goals in our, in our plan. So, those are the six primary areas. So, you can follow all of those. It's all live, right under, it's under the government tab, and strategic plan should be very easy to get to, and if it's not, I expect that you'll let me know, but I encourage you to let me know.
Can we put that out on Hot Topics page?
Let's see, I'll just take a look and see if we already do have it on Hot Topics. I'm not positive, but I will, I will double-check. That's a great idea. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And then, the other one I want to point out to council is that in the, in the matrix, the last item, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get the school board and the council together for the summer, but Diane and her counterpart at the school district, October 30th at 6:00 p.m., right here in our building, that's, it's after our, our budget work session day, so it'll be, you'll be, you'll be here a lot that week, but it'll be Wednesday evening at 6:00. And the Oshkosh Corporation report is there, and I think Mr. Davis is hanging around to, to give some news about the, the trail? Is that why you're hanging around?
Yes, that's why.
That's what I thought you were...
And it's cooler up here than it is back there.
That's why you guys should sit up front more.
This is the pool side.
I didn't know that, so just tonight. The memo I wrote at the end of last week is already old. National Park Service has approved the project now, so we've given the contractor the go-ahead. That's the good news. The bad news is, they still say it's, it could be six months before the bridges get delivered that we need for that, even with the engineering being done in the next couple of weeks. So, we probably aren't going to have the bridges installed by October 1st. It's more likely going to be by the end of the year, so we'll be working with the Parks Department on any other. I think Oshkosh Corp. had a request for a 5K run, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to provide that, since I don't want people running and then falling into the drainage ditch or into the stormwater management system.
Didn't they do a mud run?
We have some other ideas. We'll keep that on the list, though.
We could certainly give them an, an opportunity to do that.
But we have some other ideas.